Greetings, everyone, and welcome to the regularly scheduled public meeting of the Shreveport Caddo Parish Metropolitan Planning Commission. We're gonna start our meeting as we traditionally do with our invocation and our pledge of allegiance. Pastor Jackson, if you'll lead us in our invocation, and Ms. DeMarte, lead us in our pledge.
Shall we pray? God, how we thank you now for the privilege and the responsibilities that you've given us as citizens of the City of Shreveport and the Parish of Caddo. We pray now that you would govern our time together and govern our considerations to the end that it may be beneficial to those who live and who will live in the City of Shreveport both now and in the future. Thank you now for the service of those citizens who've come to share their comments, and we pray now that you would guide us into our deliberation and making good decisions for our parish and our city. We ask it all now, in Christ's name, amen.
Join me?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to your liberty and justice. One nation, united all, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks again, everyone, for being here today. For public hearing agenda items, if you wish to make public comments on an application, we have MPC comment slips at the speaker's stand next to the podium. For future notification purposes, it's very important that you fill out a slip and drop it in the box when you come forward to speak. And please state your full name and your mailing address and your zip code before addressing the board. We will call each case on the agenda in the order and hear first from the applicant and then those speaking in favor. Ten minutes are allotted for the principal spokesperson and then three minutes for each additional speaker thereafter. And then we'll then hear from those wishing to speak against an application. Again, ten minutes are allotted for the principal spokesperson and three minutes for each additional speaker. One representative of the application can then speak in rebuttal if desired. After hearing comments on each case, the board will then immediately deliberate and vote on that case before moving on to the next case on the agenda. Please note that when the board is deliberating, members of the public are not permitted to comment during that time. Any member of the public may request a copy of the board's decisions on a particular case by contacting our office at (318) 673-6480 after 1:00 p.m. tomorrow, or by accessing our website at shreveportcaddompc.com. For consent agenda items, and I don't think we have any today, and other agenda items not requiring a public hearing, public comments can be made upon request by filling out an MPC comment slip. If comments are requested for a specific agenda item, the chair will offer an opportunity for those comments prior to the commission taking action on the agenda item. All of the MPC board's zoning recommendations are submitted to either the city council or the parish commission for a final decision, and depending on the location of the property in question, it will go to the council or the commission. Please note that it's your responsibility to contact the appropriate governing body about their procedure as related to the matter that you're concerned with. Copies of this document and the phone numbers to contact the governing bodies are available on the table next to the podium in the entryway to this room. And as a courtesy, please remember to silence all of your cellphones while the board is in session. The commission values your testimony, and we appreciate your compliance with these guidelines. We will begin with the approval of our minutes.
Motion to approve.
Right, motion by Mr. Andrews and second by, was it?
Miss Bessie.
Miss Bessie, Ms. Smith. All right, what was your wish? Board, call for the vote. Do y'all have a screen?
We don't have a screen.
My screen's not on. Did you touch it? Ah, there it is.
Oh, you touched it? All right, let me know. All right, our February minutes are approved. Seeing as we have no consent agenda items, we'll move on to our scheduled public hearing. Our first case is number SP 219. It's a subdivision request. John Bowman and Associates.
My name's John R. Bowman, Jr., 3833 Southern Avenue, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71106. And we have a 21-lot subdivision, one-acre lots, be blanchard water, individual septic Any questions?
If you'll hang on just one moment, I think some of our board members' computers are, we're trying to look at the.
Got a little bigger picture, put it up there.
All right. Any questions, board? Still no questions? All right.
May I pass out the drawing, or y'all all right with it?
I think we have, we should have the drawing in front of us.
Okay.
See, the relatives, if they will have access to that monitor?
That's what I think.
Took a little while.
It took a minute, I think.
Everybody?
I haven't.
Yes, sir.
Just popped up.
All right, no other comments?
No.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you, Mr. Bowman. Is there anybody else here that wishes to speak in favor of this application? Seeing no one, is there anyone here who wishes to speak against this application? All right. Do you wish to speak against?
I can't hear you. If you want somebody to.
Is my microphone working? Is there anyone else here who wishes to speak for or against the application?
I'm against kidnapping. You want me to come talk now?
Okay, let me make sure everyone heard me the first time. Is there anyone else here who wishes to speak in favor of the application?
Yes, I've been.
Okay, come forward. I think you just have to put closer to you. And what?
Robert Matheny, 10584 Longfellow Trace, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71106. I'd like to develop it. I have one right beside it. It's 25 acres behind, it's 300 feet off of Boswick Road, so it's actually behind everybody next to a hunting lease. It doesn't interfere with anybody. There's not a traffic problem. The front entrance, as it comes out, you know, if, at night, if somebody had their lights on, it would shine on a barn, not on a house. So that's really nice. We have Comcast that just invested $40,000, installed all-new service on our Phase 1. And the fellow behind me, if his name is Mr. Bates, when I bought it, he was in opposition to my first one, which I went to his house, I understand, he's like my dad's age. And I told him I wouldn't develop that because I had intentions on selling the 25 acres. Since I bought the land, I've had it up for sale with Colwell Banker and reduced the price twice. So I haven't had any buyers on it, and I feel like where I'm at financially, I'd like to develop it because I don't know that it's gonna be very marketable. There's all manufactured homes on the front and 90% on the opposite side of the road. If you look at Alvin York or Honey, the other road, my road that I built is like five times nicer than theirs. Theirs is flat, they've got problems with it, mine drains, we have ditches, we put a concrete entrance. We have a home that sold for $206,000, which was $81 per square foot comp, which all that does is increase the value of the property in that area. And I can understand Mr. Bates not wanting his, that area behind him developed. There are deer stands on it, there's been people dumping on it, and when those woods are gone, people get upset, and I understand that. But my intentions are to have it timbered whether I'm approved or not, so if he allows me without objection to develop it, I'll leave the front between him as a buffer. We won't take any of that timber, and that'll give us a buffer. If he, you know, if for some reason y'all don't want me to develop it, then I'd be forced to take all the timber and it'll be completely flattened out and look like a pasture. So I wanna work with the neighbors, but I, you know, obviously I have some, couple hundred thousand dollars already invested, and I haven't been able to sell it two years, and I'm not gonna give it away, so I'm gonna be forced to develop it. And I will say this, I'm a part of Louisiana Mobile Home Association. I just went to Baton Rouge and got my developer license. I was in the business for 17 years ago. They gave me my license, and what I wanna do is I wanna have a manufactured home spec subdivision. If you go into Lakewood or Southern Trace, you walk into a home that's already built and you purchase it. My concept is not to do a retail lot. I wanna actually have the home set up on FHA concrete runners with 3% down, and a customer can have their choice of home to purchase. In order to do that, it has to be coated, has to have porches, we do nice walkways, and we have a nice community. So it's not a trailer park, it's not gonna dampen the subdivision. If anything, in that area, I think it's gonna be really nice, actually. If you look at my first one I developed, you can see my roads have tremendous, you know, it's built right, so I'm highly in favor of it. Y'all have any questions for me? And I am doing all the work by myself, and it's, you know, it's something that I'm putting my name on. I've got one that I built on Cross Lake 17 years ago, and the road looks as good today as it did 17 years ago. You look at everybody else's, they got potholes, they're getting stuck, they got all kinds of problems. I'm not gonna have a subdivision with my name on it that's gonna do that.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Matheny? I have one. You mentioned the foundation, and I kind of flew through that. Are those permanent foundations, then?
FHA requires concrete engineered runners in order to attain financing, just like a site-built home. So that $206,000 home, every one of those homes will be set up to government specs. They'll be able to qualify for VA or conventional, but they're also set up for FHA, which is 3%. We're not doing zero down, we're not looking to sell a bunch of property to everybody. We're looking for a select few. Most of what I have in my first subdivision are retirees. It's a good, quiet community, and we have no problems.
Okay, so again, the foundation that you, is that something that is permanent?
It's permanent.
It's not immovable or immobile?
No, no, no. It's a concrete runners' foundation with steel rebar. An inspector has to come out once it's built, an inspector has to design it, FHA has to approve it, and the loan cannot be closed or go through unless it passes all inspections.
Okay, so you'll have to forgive me for my, for not understanding the jargon, but it sounds like these homes are manufactured, but they're not mobile? I mean, they're not movable?
They're modular homes and manufactured homes.
Okay.
They're not movable.
They're not movable.
They're permanently fixed.
Thank you, thank you for, all right. All right, any other questions for Mr. Matheny? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone, and I apologize, my voice, I have, for some kind of recovering, so it don't sound very good. Is there anyone else here who wishes to speak in favor of this application? All right, seeing none, is there anyone here who wishes to speak in opposition to the application? And remember, the first speaker will be the principal speaker, and we'll get 10 minutes. Everyone thereafter will get three. So just please come forward.
My name is David Bates. I live at 6729 Boswick Road, 71107. And what he was telling you is kind of misleading, is he's saying these are permanent homes, they're brought in there on wheels, they can leave there on wheels, if that answers your question, on that. But I'm not opposing what he's doing, but, I mean, he's got this left section up there that's what he's developed now so far, and it's, I don't remember how long he's had people bringing trailers in there, but right now they have a total of six in there, five of them which people live in, and one of them is for rent. My opposition to all this is, he's selling the lots, and this property is right up against the back of my property. I live on the Boswick Road, and he goes down and behind me. And even in a mobile home park, if people don't keep their place up and keep it clean, then you can object to the owner or the people that's running it, and they can do something about it. When people buy property behind you or next door to you, out in the area where we live, they can make a wrecking yard out of it if they want to, and there's nothing you can do about it, I don't guess. But then my objection, not objection, but I wanna know why this property has done been up for rezoning three different times. Why do you have to keep bringing it up for rezoning, you know? Every time somebody wants to do something with it, does it have to be rezoned?
I can ask our director.
I was going to share with the gentleman was that the property is carefully zoned for residential mobile home subdivision. It's not being rezoned. All he's applying for is the subdivision of the land into lots, so he can put homes on each lot.
Well, I'm sorry, but I thought he had already done that.
He had gotten the property properly zoned for a mobile home subdivision. Now he's getting the final plan for the subdivision.
Okay.
And one other thing you mentioned, just for the record, no one can put a wrecking yard behind your property, and nothing will be done about it.
Well, people can move in, though, and not keep their property up. That's what I, that's what I was getting.
The parish has a property standards ordinances that govern the carried premise of property in the parish, and all that has to be done is persons have to be properly reported to Caddo Parish.
Okay. Well, I came down the other times that this was brought up and had a list of probably 30 to 50 people that had signed petition against this, and it did no good. And I know I'm not gonna do any good this time, but I did wanna express, this is a, that area back behind my house, I've walked back there before with knee boots on after a rain, and just like we've had here lately, hard rains, that area floods. If I hadn't quit walking, I would've been underwater with my knee boots. And I, you know, I'm not trying to fight the guy on this. He told me he wasn't gonna develop it to start with, and I said, okay, you know, but now he's changed his mind, and I can understand, he's not gonna just let it sit back there. But anyway, that's all I have to say. Thank you, ma'am.
Hang on just one minute. I'm gonna see if anyone else has any questions for Mr. Bates.
Beg your pardon?
Does anyone else have, I'm just asking the fellow board members if y'all have any questions? Okay, no questions, all right, thank you, and I'm grateful for you coming down here again. Is there anyone else here to speak in opposition to this application? All right, seeing no one else, our principal spokesperson, I believe, was Mr. Bowman, or if Mr. Matheny wants to return for a rebuttal?
One thing I did to address what he covered is, we have a homeowners' association in place, and it's $240 a year, which is, if you look at Thomas Arnold and Bell Cherry, what he did in the past, they never collected, the roads, in my opinion, are not good and stonewalled, 'cause she asked me to come down there and consider buying her out, but the roads are in horrible shape. So here's my point. We have a homeowners' association where somebody does not follow the rules and regulations, we all have an interest in that property, we can simply ask them not to do that. Again, if you're gonna put your name on there, you have 20 lots, if three bad apples come in there, then I'm gonna eat 17 lots and can't sell them. Make sense? So what I've put in place is regulations and rules to protect the investment, my investment and anyone else that invests in there. And at $81 a square foot, those people, you know, take good care. We also put in a provision that if someone defaults on their payment, like most people are going to happen in that subdivision, we're gonna keep the grounds up, and we're gonna keep the skirting looking good, and we're gonna keep that house marketable so it can turn until someone occupies it. That's what the homeowners' association is for, not just to maintain the roads, but we're gonna keep up any property. If someone defaults on their payment, we're gonna maintain that property so it can be repurchased and keep the value up. And I think, once they see and continue doing what I'm doing, people will get more comfortable and see that I'm putting in a good community, not a park. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Mr. Matheny. Board, what is your pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Second. A motion to approve by Mr. Joseph and a second by Ms. Smith. Any discussion? All right, we'll call for the vote. All right, and that subdivision application is approved. Unanimated. All right, moving on to case number C 1119, a zoning request. This is actually, the applicant is the Shreveport Caddo MPC.
And I think that you were apprised of the fact that this was a recommendation by the staff to downzone the 75 acres, 65 parcels from I 2 to I 1, because the majority of the uses on the property are compatible with light industrial uses, and the recommendation was to downzone all but two lots in the subdivision from I 2 to I 1.
All right, yes, thank you.
And you can see it up on the screen.
All right, thank you, Mr. Clark. Is there anyone else here who would care to speak in favor of this application? All right, seeing none, anyone here who would care to speak in opposition? All right, board, what is your pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion to approve by Mr. Andrews and a second by Ms. DeMarte. Any discussion, I'll call for the vote. All right, that application is approved. Case number C 1719, it's a zoning request by Lock Properties, Inc.
Good afternoon, I'm Jeff Rayly with Rayly &amp; Associates, 4913 Shed Road, Bossier City, here to represent Lock Properties on this request. And actually, it's really not really a, per se, a rezoning request, because 17 years ago, basically, it was zoned as we're asking for, and...
That's correct, and feel free to elaborate on that if you would.
Well, what happened was, there was a E, and so when the UDC, the new UDC was established in 2017, there are no more E-zonings classifications, so...
And by E, you mean an exception?
Exceptions, yes, because it was asked for a B2, and they denied a B2, so we asked for a B1 with some exceptions. I think the two exceptions they left out was a bank, a financial institution, or social services, and Mr. Lock had no problem with those things. And so, in talking with the staff, they said, no, you have to come down for an actual rezoning because, to get it back to where you were, because of the new UDC. So that's why we're here asking for a C1 neighborhood business. And his, you know, his plan is just to have something similar like 12 Oaks has out front, or Providence subdivision has out front, you know, nice neighborhood business, nothing, you know, high traffic or things like that, just, you know, like a professional office, a doctor's office, maybe cleaners, or a small restaurant, some kind. And I think in your packet, there were some little site plans that were just given, that he was, you know, had used for some marketing purposes at the time. But I'd be glad to answer any questions that you have about the property, we're just trying to get it back to where it was.
Okay, any questions? Board members? Okay, no questions, thank you, Ms. Rayly.
I do have a question for the staff. On this, given the change in, the request for the changes only, the request to move to C1, is there a square footage cap, a limit that comes with being in a C1 for what you could build?
The $10 square foot cap, I think it puts you in reference.
Max?
Yes.
All right, is there anyone else here who cares to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone here who cares to speak in opposition to this application? Please come forward.
My name is Thomas Barton, 208 Greagle. I live in the Haven directly behind the subject track. I've been a resident there, homeowner, for 12 years, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you. I believe you may have seen some emails that I have sent. We delivered a petition of 211 total signatures in the subdivision within 48 hours in opposition to this. And the next comment I'll make, I know the answer, but this is a constructive suggestion, and I know you've heard it probably every time you meet, most of the residents had no idea about this rezoning. First I heard of it, I think six people up in the front got mail-out notices, and I understand that is the procedure, but there were 500 other homes that did not. This is the only entrance that runs along this track into the subdivision, so it affects everyone in there. The sign, the very small sign, was down at the far end of the track, where people couldn't see it. So I don't know what the answer is, maybe some way to better communicate in a situation like this. 300-foot radius just didn't go very far. Maybe a sign closer to the entrance would've been very helpful to inform people. So that was a big concern, that people didn't know about it. There are many more people opposed to it, we just didn't have time to get their signatures. The largest complaint, concern, is, and this is just a vicinity map, you see the size of the subdivision, everything comes in and out of that one drive into East Kings Highway. Can I point on here? Comes right beside the track, right here. And East Kings Highway, it used to be a fairly sleepy street, serving mainly the subdivisions to the south. It has become a very high-traffic, high-speed corridor now. And I think one of our other homeowners will speak a little bit more about that. The speed limit's 45, routinely they do 60 on. If I go north, I scoot over on the side, and at 45 to 50, zoom past me. If I go south, do 45, they're right on my tail. So it's become a very hazardous procedure to get out. We have two turn lanes exiting the subdivision, one to the right, one to the left. Going left, south, is particularly time-consuming. The sight line, even with the empty lot, is not good now. With building on that lot and a driveway with additional traffic, it's gonna become more hazardous. We've had several wrecks in that vicinity. I asked the city traffic engineer for some accident and traffic data, and he gave a curious answer. He said, well, you can go on the website, but we've got some more recent data, but not available to the public. Can the MPC get the more recent traffic data, accident and traffic counts? I don't know. Maybe we need to research that a little more. The only one that I could find, I believe, was 204, maybe 08, it was at the intersection of Kings and the south entrance to LSU S. I believe it was 13,500, but that was before the port developed. And all the businesses, everyone caught on that you can avoid Yuri Drive and all the stoplights if you cut up East Kings Highway, up to Burke Coons, and then if you need to go to Bossier or go north on the parkways. That's the main concern of everyone, because everyone deals with going out and frustration of getting out on Kings right now. Have, may I ask, have any of the directors actually been out there on site?
Funny you should ask.
You have?
Yes.
Today.
Have you observed it during the rush hour in the morning and the afternoon?
Well, one of the things I was gonna ask you, I don't wanna preterminate the discussion, but it seems as though it's already a high-traffic area. To what extent do you propose that this planned development, if approved, would increase or exacerbate that?
The development would not. It would increase the hazard, the danger, it would be an increased safety issue. I think the port will continue to grow, the traffic's gonna increase. I've got a, this will give you a little bit better idea. This is a Google shot, the, and I use the Google ruler. The Haven entrance here is about 80 feet, not the cut-in there, and if you extrapolate that 80 feet down here on the proposed site, you can see you've got less than 100 feet between the two. At 45 miles an hour, that covers 66 feet per second, 73 feet at 50, and at 60, which some vehicles do, you're moving at 88 feet a second. If there are vehicles waiting here to pull out... If there are vehicles waiting here to pull out, the sight line is just not there. And if you pull out in less than two seconds, at 50 miles an hour, that vehicle that's obstructed by coming north, that's obstructed by someone waiting here, it'd be right on top of it. You've got a curve right to the north, a pretty hard curve, and vehicles come speeding around that all the time. This is LSUS access road for their baseball program, and the CE-Bird High School Baseball uses that. We have a lot of traffic coming in and out of there, parking on this track. This is the main concern. We've also got concern about the visual sight lines of a commercial development there. Everyone has to go over the levee to get into the Haven. You can see there is a steep incline there, about, maybe 20 feet, maybe more. So anyone entering and leaving the Haven is going to have a sight line right into this development. Air conditioners, mop buckets, trash bins, that's a concern to the property values of all the homes in the Haven. Now, there's an obvious use for this track, simple, it is already zoned residential, it could be developed residential. The La Massonne subdivision is immediately to the south, a mirror image of that could be easily constructed under the current zoning. With an entrance without having another cut, eliminating the safety concerns here, it could be developed with a cut into the HM3 Boulevard, or if another developer wanted to do it theoretically, they could extend these cul-de-sacs out of La Massonne right into that track. So there is an alternative use, develop it for what it's on now, residential, eliminate the safety problem, and the concerns about impact on the property values. The safety, basically the safety of our citizens, both the people that live in the Haven and the general public that come up and down East Kings, are the highest priority of any government body. I think everyone would have to agree with that, so, you know, what is the price if someone is involved in a major accident or fatality there? I guess the personal injury lawyers could come up with a dollar value, but that's not the true cost. I would ask, if you vote on this today, if you don't decline it, we would ask for a delay to get additional traffic count and accident studies from the city or wherever available. And lastly, there is a concern, and I don't, the MPC may have this information, I don't know, the sanitary sewer for the Haven and the MPC originally, back in '02, '03, signed off apparently on the infrastructure and the Haven being private, including the water and the sewer system. So all of this sanitary sewer is pumped over the levee from a internal sewer lift station here. This is the approximate location, and we want to make sure that there is a dedicated right-of-way in favor of the Homeowner Association to protect access to that. That will mean that the drive cannot, or hopefully it will mean the drive could not be located on top of that sewer for future access and maintenance. It would have to push that entrance to the north. Does anyone know if there is a dedicated right-of-way easement there, protecting the Haven's access?
I'll yield, Mr. G, you can study this.
And here's an example of why that was a...
Did I put an answer to the question?
Is anyone on the MPC aware of an easement or dedication?
We were about to answer your question, if you allow us to answer it.
Okay.
We haven't, we haven't gotten to that phase of study. When we get further into it, there will be a subdivision submitted, and there will also be a site plan submitted, and then that's when we get into those technical issues. And we will also be looking at driveway placement, all of those other issues. We don't, from a zoning case perspective, we're not looking at easements at this point. We will look at that when we get into both of those other areas of review.
Well, as an example of why that's important, the motors were hit by lightning in 2011. They had to install a temporary portable pump around a hose over the levee and to the city line somewhere about in this range for several weeks for the repairs. So that, that's an important thing that we would like to determine. Once it's zoned commercial, we're concerned about it not being able to address that.
And I believe that the civil engineer is here, he may have some information on that, that when he comes up for rebuttal, he could address that.
Okay, that would be helpful.
All right, I believe, since your time has expired, I'll defer to your question. Mr. Andrews, you have a question?
Thank you, Mr. Clark, thank you for coming. Mr. Clark, Mr. G, in part of our discussion on this particular property and our visit, we did a drive-by today, go ahead into the subdivision, park, and we did a visual appraisal for ourselves to be able to see. Can either one of you make a statement based on what the next steps are beyond what happens today? Make some comments about what the next steps are beyond today.
All that's happening today is, before you, is an application to rezone the property from residential, single dwelling, to C-1, commercial. That's all that's happening today. If that should happen to get recommended for approval, then before any development occurs, and that's what Mr. G has shared with you, before that can occur, then a site plan will have to be submitted. And at that time, the property will be examined for the curb cut that will actually allow access to the property, the water, sewage, the drainage, and so forth, and all of the different things about the property that you have concerns about. But all that's being addressed today is an application to rezone the property from the R-17 to C-1.
Could I ask one last question?
Yeah.
If it...
Yes, sir.
If it is rezoned today, does that automatically guarantee a curb cut?
No, sir.
So it could be rezoned and the curb cut?
It could be rezoned and the curb cut could be denied.
Okay. All right.
All right, any other questions?
I would ask Mr. Allen a question. The citizens within the 300 feet, would they notify? I heard him say...
If you look at the vicinity map and the notification area, he's absolutely right. There was not a huge amount of citizenry notified within the Haven subdivision. And since you've asked that question, we do apologize if there was not adequate signage on the proposed property for rezoning, which generally would put more than one sign on the property, and if that did not happen, our true apologies to you and the other citizens in the area, but the persons that were in the notification area were notified.
All right, any other questions for Mr. Barton? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, is there anyone else here to speak in opposition to this application? And the next speakers will have three minutes each.
I'm Ray Tudor. I live at 179 Holette, Shreveport, zip 71115. I'm in my fifth year of residency at the Haven. I will state that I am one of the six directors on the board. I'm not here as a board director, I'm here as a homeowner. I too learned of this, one of those six people who was notified, got the proximity notified, notified me very shortly thereafter. Everybody in the Haven who had access to any of our media was aware of it, and I think several of them will be here to speak to that. My concern is the traffic hazard. I'll just add to what Mr. Barton said, if I may. I'm going to give you some perspective. Can I point to this? It's not, oh, there it is. Here's our entrance. This, any curb cut that serves any purpose in this location is going to be just a few car lengths away from us, from the people who are trying to turn. We've got two, three lanes, one out, one in, two out, a right turn and a left turn, and it can be pretty dicey during rush hour. And we've only got one lane each way out here. There's, it can be dangerous, and I'm here to object to this based on, solely on that danger. Just to pull back a little bit, that is our only entrance and exit, and it serves over 500 homes here. There are over 1,100 cars registered there, and all of them typically make one or two trips per day in and out, so there's a lot of traffic. Pulling back just a little bit further, a longer view, this corridor gets a lot of traffic. As the thumb of the pointed out, and I'll turn it to Yuri Drive, it's, there are no traffic lights on this stretch, and it can go pretty fast. So we're here, I'm here, to object of the danger that is readily apparent, a clear and present danger if this happens. There is already a danger there, as has been pointed out, we've had accidents there. Any of us who drive in and out, especially during rush hour, know that it's difficult, especially when we're side by side there, trying to turn right, and there's something on your left, unless, if they're taller than you are, you've got no chance. What we, going back to this first view, and probably approaching in my three minutes, but there's not much, what we see is a parking lot here with cars turning right and left out of it. They're going to be there looking for their opportunity to get into this traffic, they're feeding into the same traffic that we're trying to feed into, only a few car lengths away from us. That can't be anything but dangerous.
All right, thank you, Mr. Tudor. Is there anybody who has any questions? Mr. Rockford?
Hi, thank you for coming. Besides the traffic concern, let's say there wasn't a traffic concern, or somehow it gets solved, is there any other concerns?
I have the same concerns Mr. Barton addressed, I just didn't have time to address them.
Okay.
But, and he's much more capable of addressing them than I am, but those are my concerns as well. When we did get notice and got the word out, we immediately started this weekend attempting to contact and get feedback. There was enough obvious feedback on our social media that indicated that we needed to do a petition. We did. I collected the last of those at 11 o'clock today, and that brought us to 211. If we had had more time, we could probably get closer to 400, so...
All right, are there any other questions from anyone? Let me just, am I hearing you say that you would be opposed to any curb cut whatsoever on that piece of property?
Yes, because I can't, I cannot envision any use that creates a commercial level of traffic access, whatever that use may be, and there are 28 possible uses according to the code. And, yeah, I just don't see how that can benefit anybody with additional traffic. The conceptual drawing that was presented along with this shows, and I know it's not what's intended, but it showed some development with offices and 50 parking bike spaces in the parking lot. Whatever is there that's going to, if it's going to succeed, it's going to attract business traffic in and out, and that's going to add to this.
Okay, so would you, I guess my question, if it were residential, if it were a neighborhood, it would obviously need a curb cut, and it's already zoned residential.
Oh, I'm not opposed to that. I can't see a problem with a residence there.
You mean a single residence or a neighborhood?
A single residence.
On the whole piece of property?
Oh, yeah, we have several properties. We have, yeah, it'd be nice.
All right, thank you, Mr. Tudor.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Tudor?
What's this?
All right, is anyone else here to speak in opposition?
I filled one of those in.
Hi, I'm Roxanne Reader. I live at 180 Gray Eagle in the Haven. I've been there for 10 years, Shreveport, 7115.
You just wrote mailing address, you already said that.
180 Gray Eagle, oh, yeah, okay. I do want to ask this gentleman, when he probably will come back up, as he mentioned that this is, one time was zoned commercial, 17 years ago.
I believe it's been up until the UDC was enacted.
I don't know what that...
Yeah, that just, the unified development.
But he mentioned 17 years. Well, I don't know if the Haven was even there at 17 years when it was commercial, but it's been rezoned as residential. I think you would have had a lot of people rethinking, maybe moving there. I also question, I don't mean to be snarky, but if Mr. Locke still lived in the Haven, would he still be wanting to change this to commercial? As a teacher, I think about the kids that are waiting down there for buses. That's where the buses let off and on, is right there at that entrance. I worry about them. Also, when I moved here about 10 years ago, I came from a city where this very thing happened. It was zoned outside my subdivision as, from residential to commercial. That subdivision has gone downhill over time. It's a shame, but that was one of the nicer subdivisions in the area, and it has just, over, what, 15 years, it's gone down. People are moving out, moving across the river. This is in South Louisiana. So I worry about that. Also, he said that the plan would be to have something nice built there. You can't control who buys it, you know, and over time, different businesses are going to come in and buy and sell, and buy and sell, and there's just a levee, that's all that there is, protecting that neighborhood, I mean, that piece of property from going into our neighborhood. We already have some foot traffic that tries to sneak in there. You know, with different businesses, I worry about that happening. I just think it's a safety issue. I moved from a small town to here, I was scared to death. I feel safe in Haven. I don't know if I would if there were a bunch of commercial properties out there, and that worries me.
All right, thanks, Ms. Reader. Okay, Mr. Jackson has a, wait, hang on just one second, we have a question. Mr. Jackson has a question.
I was just trying to keep this in context, you're saying, and not, we don't have to get into the specifics, but you lived in a place before that had a spot that was residential in front of the neighborhood, and then turned commercial, and then the neighborhood went down. What kind of a business was it?
Well, do I have to answer that? It was a trailer park. Yeah. And it was opposed by the entire neighborhood. And what happened is, they ended up building, not only the trailer park, they ended up building a little store with it, and...
I just, for context, I wanted to...
Yeah, sorry. I know, I kind of talked around the whole thing, too, but...
So are you opposed to any development, or just commercial development?
Well, what I would really like to see is it, I would like for Mr. Locke to donate it to the Haven, so it could be a place where buses could turn. The buses do, I know I'm asking a lot, but I'm going to go, I'm going to go for the big ask. If that would, I mean, he made a lot of money on that subdivision, this won't kill him. You put in a driveway for buses to turn around, so the kids can load enough offload easily. Like I said, would it really have turned into a commercial, or even asked for a commercial had he still lived there? But those kids, right there, that's where they stand every morning, and they're loaded and offloaded there. I worry about that. Why not put a driveway? Why not put a driveway for buses to pull in at best?
Okay. Any other questions for Ms. Reader? All right, thank you. All right, anyone else here to speak in opposition?
I'm doing it short and sweet. My name is Carolyn Gimber. I currently live in the Haven at 175 Hallet Drive. I've lived in the area of East Kings Highway, when it used to be called Harts Island Road, prior to being Kings Highway. When I first moved there, I was a homeowner on Stratmo Drive, which Bill Locke, the, the father of Matt, that owns that, built that. And I lived there for many years. And it was a residential area then. And that too, I have watched through the years, that it is becoming commercial also. And it's, it's going from more of a home area now into more commercial area. And it, it was intended also at one time just to be a residential area. And it has become more and more. Now that it's developed more into residential areas, we're experiencing more and more traffic, and more families are in the area. East Kings Highway has become a freeway for the traffic off of Highway 1 and from Bird Coons. It's feeding into that highway there, which it was really never, when it was built, and still isn't, built to handle that kind of traffic. It's very difficult to get in and out of our community. We have the school bus stops there, which they have mentioned at our entrance. We have the L.L. shoe game fields across the street, and the Byrd High School ball games there that play there. And I welcome and invite children in our neighborhood and love to have them there. And I'm proud that we have this, the school there. And that does create a lot of traffic also because their driveway is almost across from our driveway into our community. So we welcome those students there. But we don't need the commercial buildings there to interfere even with that. So if when you're leaving and entering in and out of our community and our neighborhood, it is a very hazardous area. And we can't allow businesses to more come in there and bring more congestion to that area, I feel, for that reason. Yuri Drive is so congested that now that they, they do use East Kings Highway for an off-road of that. And so therefore, we need to protect our residential areas for our future generations. We have several senior citizens in that area, of which I are one. And we need to also consider them and also the other, there are housing communities that are developing there, the Maison. And there's another two subdivision, housing subdivisions that are developing right there in that same area. And it's going to increase with not only, but just residents, homes that are going to increase the traffic in that area. So that is the main concern that I have, is the traffic in the area, the safety of the children that are on the school bus route right there, that's standing on the streets. And there again, if, it's some way that that even needs to be a consideration of giving something to the schoolchildren there. We've built sidewalks to get them to the street, and that has helped with their safety of walking even in the subdivision. But if it becomes a commercial area, then we're really going to have a problem with that. And I just would ask for your consideration to help us maintain this as a residential area.
All right, thank you. Does any of our board members have any questions for Ms. Gimber? Not seeing none. Thank you for your comments. Anyone else here to speak in opposition to this application? All right, now, if you're here in opposition to this application but don't wish to speak, I just want, can you please stand so we can just get a count? All right, thank you. All right, Mr. Rayly, would you care to come up for rebuttal?
Sure. Like I said, it's, it was zoned commercial for 15 years. I can't really address the, the way people drive, nor can Mr. Locke address the way people drive. He does still own probably a million dollars worth of lots in the subdivision. So I can assure you, he's not going to let anything happen out front that would cause a loss of sales inside the subdivision with the lots he still owns. Like Mr. Clark was saying, if, if someone does want to develop that into a commercial, they have to come back to this board for site plan approval. Will have to go through the engineering department for curb cuts, drainage, water, sewer. I think Mr. Barton asked about a servitude. I think on the original plating of the, of the Haven, there is a utility servitude that runs along that south sided track that does protect that force man he's asking about, so that nobody can get into it, or it's always accessed for maintenance if necessary. And then also, I think Mr. Clark, or Stephen, did talk about, if that track is developed, it'll have to be made into a subdivision plaid. And so if Mr. Locke comes back and makes it into a subdivision, he can file covenants, just like the HOA has covenants to protect the um from bad neighbors or whatever. He can, he can assign, basically in his covenants, what type of business goes there to eliminate businesses that may be unattractive to the neighborhood, that which he already still owns lots in. And like I said, we'll have to comply, he'll have to comply with anything with engineering or, or you guys when it comes to site plan approvals. Can't control how everybody drives. And I'll be, you know, glad to answer any other questions you might have.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
I have a couple questions. Ms. Rayly, the Kings Highway right there, is that a city street or state street?
City, as far as I know.
Okay, the driveway into the Haven, is that private or city?
Private.
Okay, so it sounds like the city does not want, in my opinion from the engineer, does not want more curb cuts, especially closer together. Sounds like he would put a driveway over to that private drive, and they'd all come out to Kings off that private drive about halfway down the middle of the property on the north side.
Probably not.
You don't think?
No, I mean, I would, now, I don't think he would want to come out because you need to have to cross over to get out. He would probably put his drive, if there was a drive on that south side, south, southerly side of the commercial property. Not, not, not tying into the Haven drive.
I don't mean over the levy, I mean on this side of levy. So like what that gentleman said, there's two cars not, you know, queued up to get out on Kings at the same time, you know, 100 feet apart. I just know that they don't like curb cuts close, they like common drives.
Well, yeah, they do.
That's what they're kind of going to.
Yeah, but I doubt that that would work very well.
I don't know if y'all have looked at that, I'm just asking.
No, we haven't. Like I said, we hadn't even looked at a site plan, hadn't even had a, a potential client come to do something, so we haven't looked at it. But generally, it would probably be to the south side, 200 feet or more away from that exit, entrance.
All right, any other questions for Mr. Rayly? All right, thank you, Mr. Rayly.
Thank you very much.
All right, board, it's your pleasure.
I, I have a question actually for the staff.
Discussion?
Yeah, all right. Go ahead, Mr. Roca.
It seems, seems to me, are we having a discussion? Or is it more of a quest?
We're having a discussion.
Yeah, well, I did have a question for this staff before we have a discussion.
Yep.
That's okay. I just wanted to get a little more clarification on the, what the zoning was up until recently, and what rights he had under the zoning since 2002 up until recently. I feel, I feel like our board approved him once already, and I'm a little troubled by.
We included the ordinance related to that in the packs. If you go in, look in the case and scroll down to the end.
If you look at ordinance 41T, it shows when the property was rezoned to R1D E. That was an extended use, not an exception use. An extended use that gave the, the B1 rights, and it specifically said which B1 rights were given in 2002.
So actually, he, what he's, or wanting today is not as extensive as the one he recent, he had before the UDC.
It's not, it's not as extensive at all.
It's kind of a little lighter, yeah.
And these were V2 rights, as I, as I read the ordinance. And he's only getting C1, which was equivalent to B1 in the old code. So they're much lighter uses on a much, and, and, you know, unlimited.
And more conducive to.
More conducive to.
To neighborhoods and residential. And of course, there's always, when we look, this is not a site plan or anything like that. So when we do look, if it gets passed, I don't know yet, but if, if it came back to me, we would have to look at the site plan. And there's buffers and different things like that that are involved.
Right, we, we would actually review the site plan and approve the site plan, but it would be not just us, but.
Traffic engineering?
Engineering. Engineering, the traffic engineers, and, and all the persons involved in development. And then once they recommend approval, then we would approve site plan based on zoning issues.
Thank you.
And based upon the information that we provided this afternoon, it's my understanding that the area south of this is going to be primarily commercial, not primarily commercial, but it's going to have a large commercial component. Is that correct?
That is the, the path that the master plan shows that development of the property will be.
So it's in line with the master plan?
It's in line with the master plan, contrary to things that are sometimes said. We actually follow the implications of the master plan in making these recommendations.
Of course you do.
When you say lighter uses, will you go into detail?
Basically, and I think Mr. Rayly alluded to it earlier, and, and Mr. Locke has shared this with me, that the only uses that he's interested in is possibly a small restaurant or a medical office, like a dental office, or any other kind of office, a private office. Nothing heavy duty, nothing involved, nothing heavy generator of traffic, just light commercial uses.
Be similar to provenance and 12-0s.
And that, and that's why we carried you by, it showed you other, other developments that have residents in, in the rear of the development and, and the type of light, light commercial developments that occurs in these subdivisions.
And they're primarily feeding the subdivisions themselves?
Yeah, they're primarily feeding the subdivision and services that will probably and possibly be, you know, received by members of those two subdivisions.
Is it possible, does this ever happen, that the traffic engineer, the city engineer, whoever would be responsible for the curb cut approval, would say there is no way to approve a curb cut there?
He can't, he has the authority to say that, you know, for safety reasons, there's no way that we could allow a curb cut out on Kings Highway.
Okay, so that's still to be assessed?
Still to be assessed, well, yeah. And that's what I was sharing with you. It will go through this process all the day you're determining is whether or not to rezonate to C1. Then once they have a site plan to present, then it will go through another totally involved session of approvals.
Okay, any other? It is your pleasure.
So move.
A motion by Mr. Jackson for approval. And a second by Mr. Andrews. Now, now discussion, we can have discussion, Mr. Roca?
It seems to me that they used the neighbors, not to the 300 feet, but they.
The neighborhood to the right?
Right, they didn't have enough, well, I think they had it. They didn't have enough time to notify everyone. So it would have been helpful to allow them to.
Are you, you mean like a deferral?
Yes, to have, to, for them to have more time to go to the neighbors.
If, if I could, if, if I could, just in light of what Mr. Roca said, when, there are two neighborhoods, and I don't know how to reference them correctly. Obviously, across the levy, there is the Haven, as I appreciate what it is. There is another neighborhood where this brick wall is right behind the property. I don't know the name of that neighborhood subdivision, Maison. Although, people from Maison, whoever, is that, are those the folks who said something?
No, these are the Haven residents, as I appreciate.
But I'm saying, there are people closer than the Haven to this property. But we have anything, they would have obviously been notified to some extent as well, right?
And they weren't notified, I mean, Mr. Roca, we notified persons in both subdivisions. I mean, it is impossible for us to notify the entire subdivision of any changes that are coming. We have the areas, the 300-foot radius, that we sent out notifications to. And that's why we were talking about the sign. The sign was placed on the property of a potential zoning change. And that was notification. The sign was not necessary, not required, but we put it there.
And, and Madam Chair, I, I would ask a question because I thought that that was where the highest impact would be to the people who were right, literally next to the, where the wall was right next, that didn't have a levy between them. The people who have the levy between them, obviously have the levy as a natural barrier. But, you know, I understand traffic is traffic to, should be probably, I guess, for both neighborhoods. I don't remember the egress, the ingress to the other neighborhood. But I just remember there was a neighborhood or a subdivision right behind a wall, right next to the property. And I didn't think, I, I thought that's where people who were here were from that neighborhood. Were you saying the people who have been speaking today are from Haven, which is behind the, the, the lip?
That is correct.
Okay.
Any other comments or discussions before the vote? All right, so a motion to approve neighborhood commercial C1 zoning. We'll call it a vote. All right, and that application is approved? All right, next application, case number P119, a zoning request, and applicant's more in associates. This one was deferred from February, okay.
Madam Chair, this is the one that you received a notice to withdraw.
Oh, thank you, I'm sorry.
Since, since the notice for withdrawal, then submitted no further action.
Oh, there was a notification of dismissal, all right, thank you, I'm sorry. I missed my note on that. All right, yes, the applicant submitted a notification to the board today that he's dismissing his, or withdrawing, I'm sorry, his application. So that will be removed from the docket today. All right.
And it should be explained, Madam Chair, that no action can occur, I don't know how it's fair, because the applicant did withdraw the application that was before you. So if there are persons here from that area, they will understand that no action will occur. Everything will remain as it is.
Okay, yes, can y'all hear everything? Yes, the applicant withdrew his application and today, which this, apparently, we didn't know till we got here. So that, I'm sorry about the lack of notice. We drove out there and saw the property today ourselves, not knowing that. So there will be no action on that today, so.
Madam Chairman, one thing before everybody leaves. I'm sure a lot of emails, phone calls came in. I just want to go on record that I did receive a lot of emails about it. I got those. I didn't respond to each one that came in, but we did get them. So I just want to say that on record.
And we're preserving them. We have a file in them, and we will, if, if this were to ever come back, and I don't think there's any indication that it is, but if it did, we would have our file and we would review it. And we also have a record of your oppositions at the last meeting as well. We had a lot of that, we have a video of that, so. Thank you all for coming. All right, next case. Case number P419, a zoning request. Is it Boas Home Improvement and Construction, is the applicant? Boas? Sorry, I didn't already grow up. Welcome.
Thank you.
Can you just say your name and your mailing address?
Yeah, my name is Johnny Winder. My address is 6529 Imperial Cove, Memphis, Tennessee. I'm with Boas Home Improvement Construction Company LLC, licensed general contractor in seven states.
Would you care to tell us a little bit about your application?
Yes, the application we have in, in, in front of you is an application that is at 5407 South Lake Shore Drive. We, we propose to do a 131,000 square foot senior living facility and propose to do 36 to 37 single lots, that's approximately 7,000 square foot each. And also, we're going to do a park that shows the amenities, benches, and try to enhance the area for senior citizen. We also have got the petition signed by my client for the city of Shreveport to annex that area.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Uh, Mr. Andrews?
Mr. Winder?
Yes, sir.
Thank you for coming, you said you're from Tennessee?
Sir.
You're from Tennessee?
Yes, sir, Memphis, Tennessee, yes, sir.
Is this the first time you've been associated with this project?
Yes, sir, it is.
So how familiar are you with that part of the city?
I'm pretty familiar, I've been working with my, with my client for approximately, now this is our third year, I've been looking at it, so I'm familiar with that part of the city.
And part of the material we have in front of us, there's something about homes being built?
Yes, sir, I proposed for thirty-seven single, single homes, and those homes will be designed for anyone that want to come in and put a home in there. Uh, it'll also be designed for senior citizens, because we like to try to, uh, target that area as much for senior citizens in that area, since we're gonna have a hundred and thirty-one thousand square foot, uh, senior citizen, uh, facility there. The facility that we're put, that we're gonna look to put in, will be equal, will be equal to or better than the Blake over in, uh, in, in Boulder City. The Blake in Boulder City serves approximately a hundred and eleven thousand square foot. Our proposal is to put in a hundred and thirty-one thousand square foot facility.
The homes that you're talking about, you're selling the lots for people to come in and build their own?
Yes, sir, we'll sell a lot for people to come in and build, yes, sir.
So you're gonna market the lots, is what you're saying?
Yeah, we'll market the lots, the lots will be marketed. Prox, the homes will probably start at, you know, heated property, fifteen hu, fifteen hundred, uh, fifteen hundred square foot heated, and it'll be a three bedroom, uh, uh, three bedroom, two bath, and where we'll, where we'll set it up is, we'll have the, uh, neighborhood association to take care of, if the client requests it, the property, the grass cutting, the maintenance on the front, to show the, the beautification of the area, and then leave the backyard for the, uh, uh, the backyard for the resident to cut up, to cut on their own.
And the capacity again, you said, I know it's in front of me, I just...
Yes, sir, go ahead, yes, sir.
On the nursing home capacity, what did you say that was?
Uh, it'll be a hundred and thirty-one thousand square foot, uh, facility.
And how many beds?
Approximately seventy-five to a hundred, and there'll be eight, uh, we'll get set up where there'll be a twenty-four hour, uh, patient assistant on the, on the, it'll be, it'll be very similar to the Blake in Boulder City. Uh, I went and visited, and uh, it will be very, very, uh, similar to that, be equal to or better than.
And so your traffic would be going out on, from your property, is to South Lake Shore Drive?
Yes, sir.
Well, thank you for answering the question.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Sure, and your last name again, it's, did you say Winder?
I'm sorry.
What's your last name again?
Winder, W I N D E R.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right, thank you, Mr. Winder, is there anyone else? Have any questions from Mr. Winder? All right, say none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here who cares to speak in favor of this application? Anyone here to speak in opposition to this application? Okay, we have a couple, I'll remind you again, that our first speaker is the principal speaker, and he'll get ten minutes, and all the other speakers will get three.
My name's Thomas Best, I live at fifty-two ten South Lake Shore Drive, seven eleven oh nine.
Okay, I'm sorry, your name again, is Thomas?
Best, B E S T. I've been there for eighteen years.
Okay.
Um, some history on that place that I've learned from one of the residents, has been there since, his family's been there since the forties. Um, when that property, when those properties on South Lake Shore Drive, on that side of the highway, were, um, developed, they were developed and, um, were said back in the forties were never to be developed with less than an acre, um, to be developed with less than an acre at a time, to, to be broken down into, to less than an acre, at any, at any time. Um, when they were first broken down to be sold, and that was the ones across the street, and also on our side of the road. Um, and he's wanting to set these up at seven thousand square feet, um, and he's gonna put a fifteen hundred square foot home on there, a three bedroom, fifteen hundred square foot home, that's not gonna be, at a three bedroom, that's not gonna be a very big home, plus considering putting down the roads, um, sidewalks, and everything. Um, you go in there with all your sewers, electric, and everything else, on this, um, how many total acres is that?
That's approximately sixty-six.
Sixty-six, that's what I thought, sixty-six square acres. He's coming in on there where, um, that house was being built at one time, um, it never got finished, and that's gonna be, uh, that's gonna be y'all's main place where you're gonna...
You need, you need, you need to address the...
Your, that, the house that was being built there, that never got finished, is gonna be their office and setup place. Um, he says he's gonna have a three hundred foot buffer of woods between where he's building and the houses that's there now. Um, so, if this is gonna be a nursing home type thing, I can understand, is he gonna have, um, if, if it's a nursing home for elderly with, with nurses on call, or nurses that's gonna be checking on these people, this type, where, where they'll be working with these people, these elderly people, that's one thing. But if this is a lot to be sold to just anybody, um, the people I've talked to, that couldn't make it today, there's, there's only seven houses on that road, that's up, that's meeting these, these places besides the churches there. Um, everybody that I've talked with and have proxy from, they've all against this, being, being built back there. Um, um, a nursing home facility, I mean, that section of woods could allow anybody to come in to our backyard, to come, to come right through to our backyard, through those woods. Um, they're gonna have access through their roads to come, come into our backyard for safety wise. I'm a retired Sweetport police officer. I know that area and know the crime. Um, we've had license plates stolen, we've had trailers stolen, um, in the past, out, right out of the yard, fenced, fenced yards. Um, we've, most of our people are good people, they've, most of them are elderly, um, anywhere from the sixties on up, that live in that area. Um, and they're worried about that three hundred yard buffer, with all, with the woods, with that area being built up like it's gonna be, um, and how much security is he gonna have up in that area? Um, he's talking about just selling these lots. Now, if he was building a nursing home type thing like he's talking about, like Bozer has, that's, that's different. Um, I can see that with nurses and medical personnel on site for these elderly people. But we can't see, just, here's a seven thousand foot lot, here's what you gotta build, and we'll sell you the lot. That's not what we want. For our safety factors, for our homes, and what we've had over the last forty years, since, since the early forties, when we first, first built up in there, and stuff, the families that built up in there, um, that's not what it was built for. And what it, what it was back when they said that anything built back up in there would only be a minimum of an acre lot. That's all I've got to say.
All right, thank you, is there any questions from the board? Um, I, I'll ask one question, I just, can you just clarify for me exactly, are you opposed to the subdivision of the neighborhood, not so much the rezoning, but you're opposed to the small lots as, as proposed, or I don't even think we have a subdivision application in front of us, but is that what you're opposed to?
We're opposed, we're opposed to what he's saying is being built, uh, it's, um, seven thousand foot lots as being built, the way it sounds to us is he's gonna be selling to almost anybody, and not, not setting up as a nursing home.
Okay, so you're not necessarily opposed to the nursing home, if it were just gonna be a nursing home, you'd be opposed to the subdivision of the small lots for, for residential houses?
Right.
Okay.
Right.
All right, 'cause right now it's zoned residential, so...
Right.
I would defer to our staff for questions about subdivision, and also any type of remaining...
'Cause he wants to make...
Orients that would require, um, acre sized lots under this zoning?
What he was, what he was sharing with you, the property was previously zoned RA, residential agriculture, one of the requirements of RA is one acre lots.
Okay.
By, by rezoning to R one seven, even though it's a putt, the lots will only be seven thousand square foot.
Okay, gotcha.
The adjacent zoning is, Mr. Jean, you're sharing with me on, one side is R one seven, and then on the other side is RA, so, you know, you got both zonings, but that's across two twenty, that's the RA, the, the adjacent zoning, uploading the property is R one seven, set up on the map.
Right, and, okay, can you point to where your neighborhood is?
Where we are?
Yeah, on that map, you can, right there on the...
Where, where, where it says R one seven, all the way up.
We're, our houses are here.
Okay.
Seven houses are right here.
Okay.
And it looks like some of those R one seven lots are in excess of seven thousand square feet down at the bottom.
Yeah, all those houses are well over, um, they're all anywhere from three acres up, up, all of those houses are three acres and up.
But the minimum lot size is seven thousand square feet.
For an R one seven?
R one seven, they can be...
How, how big are the houses in that area?
Every one of those houses are over two thousand square feet.
Um, okay, any other questions for Mrs., Mr. Best? All right, thank you, appreciate that. Okay, is there anyone else here to speak in opposition? To the application?
Hi, Jean Bozeman, uh, I live at fifty-four fifteen Briar Cliff Circle, seven eleven oh nine. And, uh, my biggest concern is, uh, the traffic coming in and out of South Lake Shore Drive. If you, have y'all driven out and looked at this area where he's talking about? It's everything that's coming out of the nursing home area and all the subdivision, everything is gonna be on a two lane blacktop road, uh, and basically right there in that, that small curve up at the very top is what he's talking about. Uh, that's twenty-four hour traffic, that's constant, uh, for the nursing home, that's an, an enormous amount of, uh, traffic just for the nursing home. Each one of the houses, you're, there's gonna be at least two or three cars for that. Uh, now, if they could come off of Lake Shore Drive, it's already a four lane, uh, four lane road, and it's already paved, and if they can do that, possibly, that'd be great. But for everything to come out on that two lane road on South Lake Shore, I think that's just a little bit ridiculous, and I don't think they really have thought it through. Uh, now, the Blake is absolutely a beautiful place, and it's enormous, I can't even imagine having it, uh, in my backyard, you know, and as far as the lot sizes, for seven thousand square feet is not a large lot. Uh, all of ours on my street, which is right, right, right to the right top of this, we all have about thirty-two or thirty-three thousand square feet. So, my biggest concern is the traffic, I just don't think they've really thought this through.
Ms. Bozeman?
Let me see if there's any questions for you.
I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Just for information purposes, your recommendation to come off the Lake Shore, that's been attempted once before, and that was, uh, their offer, request was turned down in this same type project.
Okay, okay, well, uh, still, you know, you're coming off of a, that's a lot of traffic to come off on a two lane road, and, uh, also, I might want to mention that just in the last year, uh, you've also approved the project for the, uh, the old Sweetport Country Club, that's approximately a mile from this, and you're talking about apartment complexes, housing, townhouses, businesses, restaurants, all right there, all that traffic, this is an awful lot for our small neighborhood to, to absorb.
So, look, Madam Chair, so, when you were talking about the traffic, now, and I may just have missed it, and maybe the chair lady has answered this, but you're talking about the traffic from the nursing home?
And, and the subdivision, everything comes out on South Lake Shore. The only property that they own that borders a road is on South Lake Shore right there, and it's a two lane blacktop.
So, so, I guess my question is, I don't, no, no, you may, what's the, what's the frontage, what's the depth, I mean, the, the width of the frontage on the property that they own? It's gotta be pretty significant, huh?
It's, no, it's, there, there, there's one house built there, nothing else is on that side of the South Lake Shore.
I can't, well, maybe I'm missing it, I, I, that, so, so what I see around there are not roads going around there, do they? What is it, white, is that, are those not roads?
At, up at the top, the two lane road at the very top of it, that's South Lake Shore right there.
Yeah, I can't, I can't point you without this.
Point you at me, sorry.
This is South Lake Shore right here.
Is that the front of the property right there?
That's right.
The line you're going on?
That is correct, that is where everything is supposed to...
And so my question is, do we, does someone know what the distance is of that? Because it doesn't look like it's just forty feet or a hundred feet or something like that.
Five hundred and fifty.
More like five hundred fifty feet.
Five hundred and fifty?
Five hundred and fifty.
I mean, I'm asking a question, because I wanna know.
Yes.
I'm not, I don't, I'm not trying to get everybody else to understand, I'm trying to understand. So, five hundred, so you said about five hundred and fifty feet?
Five hundred and fifty feet.
Okay.
Five hundred feet from what?
Five hundred and fifty feet.
Of frontage?
Of frontage.
Yes, but it's directly on Lake Shore, front, directly on South Lake Shore. Yeah, the American Legion's right around the corner there, too. Yeah, Willa Point's right there, the American Legion's right there, and just, just around here, if you come down here a little ways, there's a brand new bridge that we just completed in the last couple of years, and it's a two lane bridge. So if we're having all these enormous trucks coming in and out, ambulances, everything else, it just doesn't seem feasible to me.
I have a question.
Okay, no, you say more, thanks?
Not, not, I didn't, for the...
For staff?
Staff, sorry.
Okay, are you through with me?
Oh, well?
Well, we not, no.
I'm not sure.
I think so. I'm, I'm looking at the property, and I think we discussed, um, previously, but we're, we're looking at rezoning this entire property. When I look at this, there's this huge house, like massive house. Um...
May we, may, may we hear you, please?
Pardon me?
We're just trying to hear what you asked.
Oh, um, so when you rezone that, that's big house is included in that rezoning, right? That old property?
That's correct.
And it doesn't affect any of that, then?
The, the, the understanding, and I may have missed something, but the understanding is, as part of this project, the, the owner was to finish the existing house.
Okay.
And we can, we...
If y'all could just, I'm sorry, I just tried to keep it, keep it in order.
You can't, yeah.
The comments, yeah, thank, thank you.
We have no way of requiring the house to be...
Okay, I just, it doesn't affect the, the house, then, if we rezone this and all this? So, yeah, he doesn't have to have little lots, yeah.
I have a question for the staff.
Yes, it's a...
So, same process applies, right? So, this is just to decide whether or not the zoning needs approval, and then you're gonna have the traffic studies, and you're gonna do all the...
The final site plan, this is a preliminary site plan that you're approving, and the final site plan that you approve by staff.
Right.
Oh, you were, you were...
So it is a site plan?
You were asking about the large house that's there. It's, I doubt very seriously if it'll be able to be finished. It's been sitting there, and it's just fallen apart.
I, I just wanted to see if the zoning affected it, and it does not, okay.
So, uh...
So, uh, no, just to continue my question, so, I'm, I'm sorry, because I'm, I'm new to all this, but, so, is there going to be a traffic? Is there going to be all, all, all this, I think, the.
When we do the final site plan, we will look at.
All of these, yeah.
We've already sent this through.
Can I say something about that house?
Oh, no, you're out of order, I'm sorry, you can't.
All those things will be, will be addressed.
Normally.
Chair, lady.
Whether or not.
Stuff going on.
He can't come back there.
Whether or not the, the, uh, care cuts, where they shall be.
So normally, when you have a small road, and if the traffic, the staff or the people that go there, if they recommend, if they don't, if they don't foresee that this is feasible, they will come back and say, the road is too small, we can, you cannot have this development here.
That's what the traffic engineer's responsibility is, to ensure that.
But, same for the new, same for the new bridge, right?
We know nothing about the new bridge, the, the bridge has been there for a while, if I'm not mistaken.
But we are approving, because it's a preliminary site plan, if, if we approve this, we are approving the smaller lot sizes.
That's true.
Okay, that's what I wanted to make sure you know.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Best, we have to stay with our order, and you're out of order. Thank you, though. All right, um. Where was I? Is there anyone else here to speak in opposition to this application?
Yes, hello, my name is Alethia Lindsay Strather. I live at five four two five Briar Cliff Circle, directly across the street from South Lake Shore Drive for this. And my concern also in opposition is the fact that this seems to have already been approved, I mean, we're doing a site approval. We haven't, it's a two-lane highway, we feed everyone that's passed us on South Lake Shore, all the way toward Ford Park. Me getting off of Briar Cliff Drive to South Lake Shore now is going to be a serious problem. Because there's going to be houses across the street, we rarely can get across now, there's no traffic, it's a two-lane blacktop. And also, if I have a question for Mr., if someone could investigate, he has a registered office listed on the Louisiana database of thirty-one thirty-eight Milton Street in Shreveport, Louisiana. I don't know exactly where that is, we were unable to find it on Google Maps, it seems to be an abandoned property. So how does that correlate to such a grand plan for development?
As I, as I understand it, this, this gentleman is just a developer, he's not.
Well, the company, well, the company, I mean, what is his association with that company? How does he have a registered office in Louisiana under his, under his listing as thirty-one thirty-eight Milton Street?
And he probably can respond to that during rebuttal, Madam Chair.
So, I mean, I, I'm just concerned he's from out of state, his interest in maintaining the area. It, it just seems to be that if he would work with the residents, I live on an acre of, right at an acre of land, I'm concerned about a tenth of an acre across the street from me, and the value of my home.
All right, and your name is Miss Strather?
Alethia Lindsay Strather.
Strather, okay, thank you very much, any questions from the Strather? No questions, all right, all right, thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak in opposition to this application?
Good afternoon, my name is Deborah Hill. I live at five four zero six South Lake Shore Drive. I think I'm one of the closer individuals to the property. My concern is the same as my neighbors, I'm concerned about the traffic. My mailbox is across the street, and I have to just about run across the street to get to my mailbox, and I'm just shy of an acre of land as well. And I just want to register that I'm a no.
Thank you, all right, thank you, Ms. Hill, any questions for Ms. Hill? All right, seeing none, thank you for your comments. Anyone else here to speak in opposition?
Yes, Regina Vaughn, seventeen twenty-four Willow Point Drive, seven eleven nineteen, I too live in the area. I have a friend that lives on South Lake Shore Drive, and that's the only way I was informed of this zoning. And I guess I have a question, I'm confused, there's the house right now that has been under construction and just for probably almost eight years now, on this exact site. And I guess I was confused when I read it was like a, some type of care facility that they were saying they wanted the rezoning. So I don't understand how the care facility and how we're having a neighborhood, I'm confused. And also, I would like the, like to ask the question, how did this company obtain this property? Was it in, up for a sheriff's sale? It just looks like they've been, this house has been under construction for an approximate eight years. And now, all of a sudden, they want to zone, they want a, a zone, zoning change, I guess I don't understand. But I am opposed because it's, the, for one thing, the traffic, the two-lane road, that's just not ever a good thing. But is it my understanding they are going to fix this house up that's been under construction for eight years and use for the nursing home? And then behind it, they're going to put houses? I guess I am confused as to exactly what he's asking for. Is, could I have clarification on that?
I, I would.
Mr. Clark, Mr. Clark.
Mr. Clark, please.
We have the drawing.
Oh, yes, I was going to direct a question, I thought you were trying to.
Oh, no.
Oh, no, I was just waiting for Madam Chair. The existing house will be used as a residential dwelling. It is our understanding as part of this plan that the existing house will be completed. And I know it's been under construction for eight to ten years, but it's our understanding that it will be completed as a residential dwelling. The development that we're talking about is behind this existing house. The residential care facility and the subdivision of the different lots. And, did I answer your question, or do I need to go more in depth?
We, we have a slide, there you go, we have a drawing that shows.
Zoom in, please.
I would need a C and I dog.
Yeah, I mean, if you look at it.
I couldn't even remotely with the magnifying glass.
The square.
Look right down there, where she's standing there.
And red, that is the residential care facility. Something happened to my screen, get the duck.
So, I guess I still don't quite understand, that is the, in the red is the residential care facility?
And that's behind, at the top is the house that you're talking about, right above, that is the house that you're talking about.
Okay, and the house is what you're saying is where the residential care facility?
It's going to be a, a house, that someone's going to live in.
Okay.
That's the house up at the top.
Okay.
Then the, and, and it appears that the color is, is red from here, but it may be pink. But that is the residential care facility, it's sort of in a square. And then if you look around that, you see the different lots with numbers on them, though, that is the subdivision of the property, the R one seven lots, where the houses will be built.
Okay, and, and so will they be one acre lots, like what was originally?
Seven thousand square foot lots.
So I do oppose the zoning change for that.
Okay, I'm, I'm just trying to explain.
Absolutely, and I'm trying to understand how it was a residential care facility, and now there's a neighborhood included in this all-in-one. Because when I read my, my friend who shared the notification with me, that it was just a residential care facility. And then when we got to this meeting, it was like the residential care facility and there is a neighborhood being built, which was not in the notification, and that's where I'm confused. And I'm not very informed about all the zoning, because I only got notification of this from a friend yesterday. And so I guess I don't understand how we've lumped all this together into that zoning change.
It was applied for as a planned unit development, and that's a unit development that can consist of different uses. One of the uses was a residential care facility, that's the large commercial development that you're looking at. The, the property was zoned RA, and those were acre lots. But by making that application, they also applied for smaller lots, to the seven thousand square foot lots, which you see the multiple lots up on the, the plan. And, and then the house was a part of that that was incomplete, but it has nothing to do with the actual development. The house just will remain and will be completed.
And, so I guess I'm confused as to how much frontage the house, so the house will be right there in front of where the other lots?
Absolutely, the house will be where it is now, and the other development will be behind the house, as you can see from the diagram. Can you see it up at the top of the map?
No, I would have the classes, no, I.
Madam Chairman, can I ask a quick question?
Yes, Mr. President.
Could you put the map up that's P four nineteen on, on the handout? We can see that a little better.
Okay, so these are all.
It's like page.
Area reference.
We're going to answer your question.
No, no. Yes, okay, now look at this one, Ms. Vaughn.
Okay. Oh, that's.
Okay, now what I'm, the ones up at, right next to C one, what size lots are those, Alan, do you know?
Those are R one seven, they're seven thousand square foot, minimal lot size. They're no, they're no smaller than seven thousand square foot.
The R one seven at the very top are seven thousand?
We don't know the exact dimensions of.
What about the ones right to the, between R one seven and C one? Can you see those, they're stacked in there?
You're asking.
What size are those, do you know?
Those are their, those couldn't be any, I mean, I don't have the exact size I'm trying to look at right now.
But they can be smaller than seven thousand.
Can be smaller than seven thousand square foot.
So you see the ones I'm talking about? What he's trying to do is, these lots there, right there at the top ones, they'd be that size lots on this acre, as a pud, planned unit development. So he's going to have the big house, he's going to have the homes and the care facility, and he's going to have all these lots around it that size.
And they're going to be the sixteen square foot, sixteen hundred square foot houses that he mentioned. The three-bedroom, two-bath, sixteen square foot houses. On the lots.
Okay, thank you, but still the smaller lots?
Still the smaller.
Yeah, not the acre lots?
Not the acre lots.
And what would be the timeframe for completing the house that's been under construction for eight to ten years?
I don't have an answer for that, because like you, I've wondered why the house has not been completed.
Exactly, and I was just curious as to how the property was obtained, was it, is he the one who started building the house ten years ago?
We don't know the answer to that either.
Or how the, how it became to be his, in his hands, I guess I just don't exactly understand all that.
He is just the applicant.
I got you.
That's proposing to build the, do the subdivision and do the personal care facility.
I see, but having the applicant, he obviously owns that piece of property, is that correct?
He doesn't own the, the property, he's the developer of the property.
Okay.
The owner of the property is whoever endless means acres.
And we have no physical address of endless?
We have no.
No, no physical address of this, of these, this place, or what, I guess that's where I don't understand either.
And, and like I was sharing with the chair, that's a question that the applicant can answer for you, doing the rebuttal. I mean, we could give you a P O box, but that's not going to help.
Thank you, and I oppose this.
All right, thank you, any questions for Ms. Vaughn? No questions? All right, um, any more, any more, yes, if you'd like to speak in opposition, come forward.
Please excuse my slowness.
That's all right.
My name is Valerie Best. I live at fifty-two ten South Lake Shore Drive, Shreveport, Louisiana, seven one one zero nine. I can partially answer the, the lady who was just up here's questions about the house. The property behind my house, which is. I think I live right there, I'm not sure with that map. The large area that is to be developed is All Woods. It was originally owned by a lady in California. She sold part of the property to a retired Shreveport police officer who was building the house. The lady apparently ran out of money to build the house, so she started harvesting timber from the rest of the property around her. When the owner of that property in California found out, she threatened lawsuit. That's why the house is no longer being built. The Shreveport police officer had to vacate, as might be. But my concern now is, if that house is going to be built as a house, one of our neighbors, who unfortunately is at work now, could not come, when he found out about this, he came up to the government, whatever, to find out about it. He was told that the house area was going to be developed as the, um, office, shall we say, of the residence property. He wasn't told about any houses to be built, it was just to be a senior living. And that's be different to, from me, for me, anyway, that's different to a nursing home. Assisted senior living is me, who has bad health and can't do everything by themselves, but still lives in a single-family dwelling. I can do most things, but some things I can't, and that would be assisted living. I don't live in a nursing home, I don't want to live in a nursing home. So there's a, a question there as to exactly what are they building? Because it was unclear in the letter that we got. The housing, if that drawing, can I see the picture of the, the, just the, the nursing home area, the, that thing?
Ms. Best, I'll just point out that your time has actually expired, but if you can just go ahead and finish that.
If those lots are the size of those little bitty tiny things on the previous map, those are tiny. Absolutely tiny houses that are going to be built there. I, I just, I'm, I don't like it, and if the house is now going to be built as a house, that reduces the frontage. So where's the road coming out from the nursing home onto the South Lake Shore? I mean, that, that takes out their frontage, big time, because that's a big house.
All right.
And I'm opposed, definitely.
There might be questions, does anybody have any questions for Ms. Best, Ms. Best, sorry? I'm seeing no questions, thank you very much.
No questions, thank you.
All right, I think I saw someone else here in opposition.
My name's Frank Carnivali, I live at fifty-four fifteen Briar Cliff.
Okay, and you said Frank who?
Frank Carnivali, C A R N I V A L E.
Thank you.
And I want to say, right from Lake Shore, all the way around, I live right here, there is the, oh.
American Legion.
American Legion, there, there is one restaurant, that's been there longer than probably anybody in this room's been there. Different restaurant, but it's a restaurant, it's a nice restaurant. Between there and all the way to Ford Park, there is, so might correct me if I'm wrong, there is, that's the only actual. there is, that's the only actual commercial. The rest is all residential. And all of these houses across the street from me on Briar Cliff, one house just sold, it's almost, it was four ninety, four ninety-five. I have another house directly across the street, it's for sale now, it's five hundred, it's actually five seventy. This is not a, these are all nice, and then you have all this on Little Point. And if you go, and let's face it, we're all, i- if it's a nursing home, you know that's low income. And these houses over here, they're like, they're low income too. There's nothing why you can, nothing else you can say. And everything's gonna dump right out there onto South Lake Shore through two entrances. That's gonna be too much, there's gonna be deliveries, constant deliveries. There's going to be untold people who don't live there, they're non-residents. You have visitors. And, I mean, why now is somebody wants to put a commercial into a totally residential area? There's two churches, one church is closed, the other is about to die. And there's no other commercial there. I don't, I don't understand why you would want to do that. And why can't you get an easement out this way somehow? Easements are done all the time, we all know that. And, anyway. But there's gonna be constant noise, traffic, and that's a curve right here, if you notice this curve right here. My neighbor, they're gonna have wrecks right in front of her house. I mean, it's just ridiculous that anybody would even think to put a commercial, something like that. That's a huge facility. I mean, there's gonna be over a hundred something beds and then these houses, which we really don't even know who's gonna be there. So anyway, that's it, I'm opposed to it too.
All right, thank you, Mr. Carnivali.
Excuse me, sir.
Mr. Roca has a question.
So you are opposed to the commercial, not to the residential, not to the...
I'm opposed to it all. It should not, you should not have that empty onto a totally residential neighborhood.
Right, so you are okay with residential, but not commercial?
No, I don't want any, I want, it's low income.
Could you just go back to the microphone?
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, sorry, thank you.
It's, it's gonna be low income. When you talk about senior citizens and you're talking about a nursing home, it's a nursing home, and these other small lots, that's gonna, that's, I mean, you know, everybody knows it's gonna be, it's low income.
I mean, what I've been told is that there are some 7,000 or so square foot lots next to the water, and you just told me that they were sold for 400 and 500,000 dollars, is that what you said?
No, that's across the street from me, I'm just giving you an example of how much the house is. I think I probably have the smallest house, and my house is 2,000 square foot across the street. There's, there's not any small houses around there. My lot is 200 by 160. So that's a lot of square feet compared to what these lots that you're gonna put there. Those are low, those are essentially low-income houses, we all know it. And you're gonna be, you're gonna be emptying into a rather high dollar, high income.
So I guess I have a question for the staff. So I, I think I heard that there are other lots outside of the development that are on that neighborhood of the size of the lots that they are, is that correct?
There are lot, the lot classification of the lots outside of that development are the same, R one seven, which are minimum of 7,000 square foot feet.
Minimum.
Now, I'm not saying that they are those dimensions, that is the minimum that they can be.
You can see them up at the top, where is she?
Yeah. They look la, some of them look larger than 7,000 square foot. But you also have some RA zone lots, and those are a minimum of one, uh, one acre.
I'm sorry, I mean, I, I just find difficult to see, I mean, if you're so close to the water, how, how the value of the homes will be so low income. That's just, that's just me.
Well, all this, all these houses here, this is not low income, none of this is low income.
Right.
And this down here is, is very high income.
Right.
When you say low income, are you saying like government subsidized or something like that?
Well, whatever you wanna call it, I mean...
No, I'm asking what you're calling it.
I'm calling it, if it's, if it's for senior citizens, we all know it's going to be, it's low income, those are...
I guess I'm trying to get you to distinguish between low income in terms of earning capacity on the one hand versus being subsidized by the government on the other.
Well, once, once you let small homes on 7,000 square foot lots, the house across the street from me is, is almost 6,000 square feet. One house. And you're gonna put these houses on a 7,000 square foot lot, three bedrooms?
That's the size of the lot. What I'm getting at is your phraseology. I'm trying to understand where you're coming from, because it seems to me, listening, that that's the point of contention for you. So I'm trying to understand where you're coming from.
Well, we know that it's gonna, we know that these houses are small houses.
Thank you.
I, I have a question for the staff, I don't know, do, do you have any idea about the character of the neighborhood? Because I know, like, if you look at Paramount Place, those are garden homes that are kind of maybe for, I don't know if they're more senior citizens, but they're very expensive and they're very nice, but they're very small. And that, is that what he's trying to do, is kinda have a, like a transitional living area where the, are they for senior citizens, the housing? Or do you even know?
It was, I understand that it's a subdivision, is a subdivision.
Right.
For a person who are interested in living in the subdivision.
Right.
The residential care facilities is the only thing that's designated for senior citizens. Uh, we, we, we have no way of determining who would be interested in buying the lots.
Okay, so he mentioned earlier in his, in his introduction that he would, there would be the lawn in the front and all of that would be cared for by the homeowner association or something? So I just wondered if this was supposed to all tie in with the facility or, or not? I can't, I just can't get a very good feel for it.
And, you know, that would be part of the homeowners association's agreement. I, I will admit that that's an unusual process, that only the front yard will be maintained, but that's something that we have no control of.
And that's purely contractual on part of the purchase of the lots.
Right. The subdivision, homeowner association.
And he's not, well, I guess I can ask him, but he, he's not requiring certain specifications for these houses? He's just freely selling the lots and they can build over them?
That's what I'd like to know.
Is that what you understand or...
Let him address it in his...
Okay, I didn't know if you already knew that.
He may have some more information.
Okay.
But all we know is that lots will be for sale as they are in other subdivisions.
Okay.
And those that can afford them will be able to purchase them, and those that cannot afford them will not be able to purchase them.
Okay. All right, any other questions for Mr. Carnivali?
Yes, I, well, I guess maybe this is not fair. I, I'm assuming that Mr., the Speaker is just making assumptions himself. Because obviously he doesn't know, so we'd have to talk to the person.
No, I don't know, but I, I know, you know and I know, we all know what's, what's those small houses. Well, does, does anybody know anything?
Let me just say this to you, this is what I know. I know if I live in a 2,000 square foot house, this may be what I choose to live in. Doesn't dictate my income. So my question is, there are people who are living in the senior living facility, because they're living in the senior living facility, I'm not sure, because Kip referenced in a place called Blake, was that what we were talking about?
And we looked at it, but it's quite a, a, involved and a fluid-looking care facility.
Is that not, so that's not a low-income place?
It does not appear to be low-income. I mean, you know, there, there are plenty of senior citizen facilities that are not low-income. The citizens that, some of the senior citizen facilities out along Florida Lucas Road would take issue with them being low-income.
Well, I mean, that's my, that's my, that's my only concern. I just didn't want this subject to get convoluted with the, you know, throwing, you know, just innuendo about whether or not it's gonna be low-income, if we don't know that for sure. But he can't answer that question, I guess the person who's, who's developing it probably can answer that question.
The only person that can answer that, that question is the...
All right, can we speak to him?
We'll, we'll get to him at rebuttal, I guess, right?
Oh, okay, yeah.
Yeah, is there anybody else here who cares to speak in opposition?
Hello, my name is Ken Polovich. I live at eighteen twenty-nine Hunter Circle in Shreveport, seven-eleven nineteen. I'm, I'm opposed to the project, basically for all the reasons that have been stated thus far. But I particularly have a question about the fact that, how can this even be considered right now when the state of Louisiana has a moratorium on the development of nursing homes? And it wants not due to expire for another four or five months? And it'll probably be renewed because there's a big push right now to try to kinda downsize nursing care facilities and let people stay at home and get care at home. That's, that's just a, from what I understand from reading about. So, you know, I, I don't know that this, this is, I mean, I'm just kinda concerned that this is even being considered right now unless, you know, the certificates of need for this thirty-five, twenty-eight-bed skilled nursing unit in the senior living apartments, well, they're, they're probably not, not fall under that, under the certificate of need, but the memory, twenty-four-bed memory care is the other one. So, those are, those are my concerns. And I'm opposed.
That's not an area that we would be involved in, they would have to get the proper license from the state.
Correct.
And if the state refuses to license them, then they would not be able to occupy the facilities.
That's the answer, that's the answer.
Any questions for Mr. Polovich?
No.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else who's speaking opposition to this application?
Hello, my name is Rhonda Hadad, and I own the property, my husband and I own the property at five-two-two-six South Lake Shore Drive, our son lives there. I think the first thing that I'm concerned about is the notice itself. As my friend stated, she lives, her neighborhood is, is this neighborhood, and she got no notification of this, of, of what was going on at all. There is a sign in front of that house, the large house that has been referenced many times. So honestly, I came thinking that this apparent nursing home, for lack of a better word, was, was going, that's what the house was going to become. I thought maybe that whoever owned the house was, has not been able to finish it and selling it, and they're going to turn it into a small nursing facility, you know, for, for elderly people. So the notice wasn't very clear on that. I, I never dreamed that there was actually a proposal for an entire neighborhood, basically, on that small area. And, you know, as many people have said, that it, it backs up to all of these, would be all these larger lots, and these are gonna be very small. And once again, the only place for them to empty out to for traffic is going to be this area right here. All of this is, well, this part is landlocked, so that would be the only way on South Lake Shore that they would be able to get out. And as many have said, it is a two-lane blacktop road, which is already pretty busy with just what we have. And now, what, what are they proposing, like sixty-something lots? And then, I guess, also a residential facility as well? I, I am opposed to it mainly because of, once again, the traffic and how it's going to get in and out and how it's going to affect all of us, you know, in that area, as far as traffic goes. We, our house is in this curve, and I mean, it's dangerous now. You have to, there's no way we can back out of our driveway with that traffic. You have to turn around in our, on our property and pull out of the driveway, because if you backed out, you're literally taking your life into your hands. Because, I, I don't know, I think the speed limit's supposed to be thirty-five, but I guarantee you, no one drives thirty-five on that road. And, so that's my opposition to, to what they're proposing. And again, I also feel like that, that we don't really have a represented, you know, a group repres, I'm not, I can't think of what I'm trying to say, I'm nervous. Um, I don't feel like enough people were notified, you know, kinda what they were saying in, in one of the cases that we heard before, that, you know, right there on Willa Point Drive, which is just catty corner from where this is, nobody, she didn't even, she never got a, never received a notice. I feel like that maybe only those of us on South Lake Shore received the notices and nobody else did. So I feel like that there would be more opposition to it if more people knew it. But, anyway, that's my opposition is the traffic, and that's all I have to say.
All right, hang on just a second. All right, and it's Ms. Hadad, is that your name? Oh, I'm sorry. Is, is it Ms. Hadad?
Yes, Mrs. Hadad, yes.
Is there anybody here who has some questions?
Just, just FYI, as you referred to just a moment ago, and the previous people in other cases referred to, there is a, there's a three-hundred-feet radius that the office sends letters to. So if you live four-hundred feet away, or whatever the case may be, that's the issue. It's not that, the, the posting is for everybody who drives by. The notices go out to that distance for folks who are, the impact is right within that three-hundred-feet area. So that's the reason, nobody was, is intentionally looking over people who, who may feel impacted or even be five-hundred feet away.
Okay, so even though this neighborhood would, would fall within that three-hundred feet, so you're not, even though their neighborhood...
No, that's way beyond three-hundred feet. The red line is three-hundred feet, yeah.
Oh, I see, I see, I see. Because I'm thinking, I'm way more than three-hundred feet, but as the crow flies, I get it, I'm not three-hundred, I mean, I am within that three-hundred feet, I get that now. Okay, I see. And the sign, I must say, I just noticed it for the first time this week. I'm not saying that it's only been there a week, but I just noticed it for the first time this week. Oh, somebody had knocked it down, okay.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, any other, anyone else to speak in opposition?
Yes, I'm Gay Burgess, I live, I have a cold. I live at eight hun, eighteen-eleven Hunter Circle, and I wanted to, of course, express my concern for the traffic. You have to remember that off of Lake Shore, and come down South Lake Shore, we have fishermen with boats and trailers that go to the public landing. And after they have fishing tournaments, they're hauling up and down that road as fast as they can to get their boats, I'm sorry, to get their boats out of the lake and get home. Also, I wanted to address the housing. It's not the 700-square-foot lot so much as the 1,500-square-foot house. You can build a nice house of 2,000, 3,000 square feet on a smaller lot. But you know if you've got a three-bedroom house, you know you can have at least two cars coming and going in and out of that subdivision, at least two, if not four. So that's where we're wearing tear on our road. That's the only, the concerns I have is that the low, uh, square footage of housing. If all the houses were of three thou, 2,000, 2,500 square feet, that would probably not be an issue, but the nursing home is an issue. So that's pretty much my concern.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Vargas or Burgess?
Burgess, V-E-R-G-E-S.
Oh, thank you, all right. Any questions for Ms. Burgess? All right, thank you. Um, anyone else who's speaking opposition?
Joanne Willis. I'm here on, well, my address is three-thirty-three Texas, Suite 1050, with Sealy Real Estate Services. I'm here on behalf of the property owner of the forty-three acres to the south of this proposed development, Summers Forty-three LLC. I, I have been retained by them to market their property, and they asked me to come listen and, and then give them my input after the, after the meeting. My main concern, from what I've heard today, and I did gather the, all of the information, thank you, Mr. Clark and, and staff members, I have the full staff report. I had, I have looked at the site, the proposed site plan, and I understand the reason it was, the case was deferred several times was because the site, the site plan was inadequate. It didn't provide enough information for staff to, or the board and staff to really actually be able to make a decision. So, so all of that has brought us where we are here today. I think my main concern is the quality of the development and as it would affect my client's property, which is zoned RA. And it would, you know, what happens at this property will definitely affect property values for the Summers. Through the years, the Summers have talked to me about the applications that have been made for various... been made for various developments on this same particular tract. And there's quite a history, you know, if you, if you read the, the full staff report, I think there's been, there have been four or five different applications through the years, which Mr. Summers and I discussed, um, at length before his passing. Now his, um, his heirs have the property and they, they're asking me for the same kind of input. So, um, going from, um, the, the nursing home, and, and I do have to say, not all nursing homes are low-income. There are some really, really nice, uh, nursing homes. The Blake is an example of one, that's definitely not low-income, um, that are acute care facilities that go from, you know, they have the Alzheimer's units and all of those other kinds of things. So just because it's a nursing home doesn't mean that it's going to be a lower income. The, um, the lots, as far as the lots, the, what's allowed on the R-one-seven, that's about seven thousand square feet, is about six houses per unit, a little bit more than six houses per unit. So they will be small, doesn't necessarily mean they're going to be lower income, it just depends on what market you target and how much you sell the lots for and how, and what value those houses carry. So, um, I do, those are my concerns, you know, the overall development, the traffic is, you know, we're on the hard corner of, um, Lake Shore and I-two-twenty. So we're not going to really be affected by the traffic like the people on South Lake Shore and Barcliff are going to be affected. So, um, I just think you ought to be really, really careful about what you approve, um, overall, the master plan, I think I still have some questions about it. I don't, I don't see enough information on there for me to really be able to formulate an opinion about his development. I'm anxious to hear his rebuttal, so that's what.
All right, any questions for Ms. Willis?
Thank you. Um, I do have a question. So you're, you're a Realtor?
Yes.
Okay. And do you have other properties that you, that you're, that you have other, other properties that you represent, right, right next, I mean, close to that area?
This is the only one in this area. It's the, the forty-three acres south of this subject property that you're talking about today. See, oh, this one. This is my, this is my client's property.
Okay, but do you have experience selling, selling properties around that area?
In, um, yes.
Okay.
I don't, I don't do residential properties, I only do commercial. I'm a commercial real estate broker.
Okay. I mean, I'm just curious about the, I don't, I haven't been in that particular area.
Yes.
So I'm trying to picture, you know, what he, the other gentleman idea or, uh, assumption is about low-income.
Yeah, that's what they fear.
Is it, is it, for me, what I've seen, you know, is once you have developments that are four or five hundred thousand dollars per home, and they're close to the water, that drives the demand of the houses, right? So even if you buy, if you build a fifteen-hundred square foot house, if you are close to a five hundred thousand dollar house and you're close to the water, chances are that that house is going to be two hundred, three hundred, something like that, right?
Water definitely drives value. I mean, if you're on the water, your house is going to be worth more than if it's across the street and not on the water, on the same street. You know, like in Barcliff, some of them are on the water, they're, they're definitely, wouldn't you agree, worth more than the ones that are not on the water. He was asking me water versus not on the water, so, yeah. So, I may, shouldn't have used Barcliff as an example, South Lake Shore.
Mrs. Willis is much younger than I am, but she's been around for a little while. She's told me that these houses based on water drives the market. She's quite knowledgeable and quite experienced in that area.
And, you know, you, you, you are going to affect value of those, of those more expensive homes. If you put, if you put, you know, a fifty thousand dollar house next to a, or if you put, say, I don't know, how many lots are there, times six, how many houses would that be? If you put, I mean, I don't know how much they're going to be, say seventy-five thousand dollars. If you put a hundred seventy-five thousand dollar houses next to a hundred, six hundred thousand dollar houses or four hundred thousand dollars, all of that's going to, it's going to affect the value. You know, it's all a function of the market, though. It depends on what buyers are out there, what they're willing to pay for the property, you know, the kind of, um, resident that you're going to attract, the, the maintenance of the property, what kind of, um, homeowner's association he has, how strong it is, if he enforces the rules and makes people keep their property up, you know, that's a whole different issue. I don't know of any, uh, lower-income subdivisions that have a homeowner's association. I'm trying to think, um, of any, you know. To me, when you say lower income, I'm thinking of Section Eight housing, government subsidized, you know, rental assistance and those kinds of things. So I'm anxious to see what he has in mind, so we can kind of assess, you know, what we need to do with this property in the future. Questions?
Well, and I want to ask this to you necessarily, Joanne, but just Madam Chair, if I might, um, to the staff, I, I think what I looked at, when I saw it, was that this is perhaps comparative to the people who have, who have lots of homes there. This is the largest landowner in that area, right there, this person, whoever this, whoever the applicant is.
Whoever.
Yeah, they, they are the largest landowner in that area. And they have over what appears to be fifty acres, and it is currently zoned RA. Now, I, just for, just, you know, for sake of understanding. That individual, without having to come to the MPC, could build fifty, uh, sixty houses on that property right now at whatever size he or she wanted to build.
If it's-
Right now, as a use by right.
RA is a, one house per one acre. So I think it's a sixty-two acre tract of land, so he could build sixty-two houses.
Let's say he builds sixty houses, all twelve hundred square feet.
He could.
My, my point is, that's the use by right.
That is.
And so, I, that's, I, my, I think it's important that as we work through this, we understand that, that use by right changes when the zoning changes to R-one-seven, what that individual could do in that, with the use by right.
That's right.
So I just, I mean, I think we haven't talked a lot about that. But everybody who's saying this, if it's low-income or the size of that, the use by right is unaffected, I mean, that could happen tomorrow, quite frankly, is what I'm saying.
Right.
So a development that, that we can look to and try to, uh, regulate will help to guard against perhaps what is currently a use by right.
Yeah, with the, the lot size would shrink. Instead of one house per acre, it'd be six point two, three houses per acre. And it depends on what he sells those lots for.
Right.
And it, as it sits right now, if he did say, well, you have to account for land area for the streets and drainage and all of that. So, say, he could build fifty houses on sixty-two acres, then what would he sell that acre for? That's going to determine the value of the house. You know, what he would sell that seven thousand dollar lot for is going to determine the value of that house. It's all a function of economics, so.
Madam Chairman, I think you brought a good point up. An acre is forty-three thousand square feet.
Forty-three thousand five hundred and sixty square feet.
There you go. So the six houses you're talking about, if he goes to that seven thousand, that's six houses times the sixty-three acres, that's three hundred and sixty houses. So I get it, the residents are okay with sixty-three houses, a house per acre, but not three hundred and sixty houses potentially.
Well, you wouldn't be able to put that many if you put the nursing home in there because that takes it. But if you just didn't do the nursing home and did the R-one-seven, yes, it'd be a whole bunch more, yeah.
I get it.
The other questions? Thank you, Ms. Willis, thank you. Anyone else here to speak in opposition to this application, in opposition? All right, Mr. Winder?
Winder.
Winder, would you care to come back for a rebuttal? And maybe answer some questions?
Madam Chairman, this is my engineer, could I have him speak on behalf of-
I think so, I think anyone can do the rebuttal, yes.
Joey French, French Engineering, Post Office Box eight-seven-two-seven, Bossier City.
Okay, and last name again is?
French.
Oh, French, thank you.
Maybe I can clear up some of this stuff and give some examples of, uh, what the development would be like. First, by the master plan, it's only thirty-six houses, when it could be, like Mr. Jackson said, fifty tomorrow. So, and you may be familiar with Burgundy Ridge out on Williamson Way, it was a two-lane road, there's a hundred and forty-something houses in there, seven thousand square foot lots. The house fills up the lot, uh, they have the same, I told Mr. Winder about this, the same homeowner's association where they have a community-wide, they plant seasonal flowers, keep up the front yards, because this is older people, they don't want to keep up the yard, and-
You're talking about in the individual, in the single dwellings?
Yes, ma'am.
The single family dwellings?
Yeah, and they're, just because he said a minimum of sixteen hundred square foot, they could build twenty-five hundred square foot. But it's, um, and the care facility is something like the Oaks, where you have people that can take care of themselves, they just don't want it, they want to live in an apartment and have everybody do something for them, up to a nursing home. So it's, uh, for that tract of land, it's actually a pretty low-density development, what he's proposing, if you look at that, um, other than the concentrated area of where the care facility is. You can see on that other, if you put that up. See all these cul-de-sac streets? That, that's where those, the lots will be, then, of the individual homes. And then, of course, it's concentrated in the middle where the, um, and when you look at it from the, when you see it today, with that hundred-foot buffer, they're not going to disturb it at all, so the, the area's going to look the same as it does right now. And, uh, the house, the lady's name, it owns endless means, is, is, her name's Ms. Wilkinson, she's a retired Shreveport police. And that is her house, and from what I understand, she plans to complete it and live in it. And I'll answer any other questions you might have.
So it is a transition, transitional living, right? Is that what you just described? You're, you're thinking that those houses, that some older people are going to live in those houses?
The surrounding, the nursing home? Yes, sir.
Okay.
What, what they went and looked at is, you know, in, in North Bossier, up on Airline, there's a age-restricted subdivision. And they have small lots like that, and the house basically fills up the lot, and they have a little bit of green area. And that's, I think that's what they envisioned this to be like.
So they're, it's like garden homes.
Yes, yeah, that's a good way of saying it.
Is there any kind of price point that you're, that you're aware of? Like for the lots themselves?
Price, what the lots would sell for?
Right. I mean, I don't know what, I'm just trying to figure out-
The market value, I'm sure. I don't know why-
You don't know what that would be?
Well, I know what, a, a house generally in this area is a hundred and thirty to a hundred and forty dollars a square foot, so whatever they build out there is going to be, the house is going to cost that, and the lot, I mean, just from city develops, I do, they're probably fifty thousand dollar lots.
Okay, so are you, is, is she anticipating, you may not be able to answer this, but it's from your, from your understanding, is the builder, the owner anticipating that these houses will somehow be tied into the care facility for services? Like, like a transitional type, you know, like the whole development will be, um-
Well, I, I'm sixty years old, I might go live in one of those little houses, and then when I get more people move across the street, yeah, I, I could see that, but she, she's in a business, a home healthcare business-type deal, so that, that's, she has a background in this, and I assume that's why she's chose this method to develop her property.
But there's nothing preventing from a family, a young family to, to live there. I mean, you're, I mean, there's nothing preventing anyone, you know, that has a-
If it's age-restricted.
It's age-restricted.
So it's age?
It's called, yeah, the title of the application is-
What's the age?
Fifty-five, I believe.
Fifty-five or no?
Yes.
Okay.
Like I said, there's one in North Bossier like that, it's right past Swan Lake up there.
Since we don't know the value, I mean, the price, do you know the cost? I mean, you can tell the quality of the houses that you're going to build by, but is it, is it an estimate?
I mean, the going, the going rate in this area is a hundred and thirty to a hundred and forty dollars a square foot, from what I understand from builders.
So that's fifteen hundred square feet, so you're talking about round?
Well, that, that would be a minimum, that, you know, you could build whatever would fit on the footprint. Like, if you go to Burgundy Ridge, there's some sixteen hundred foot houses, and then there's some twenty-five hundred foot houses. Whatever would fit on, fit on the footprint of the lot, could, what a person could build.
Any other questions for Ms. French?
I have a question for the staff, is there anything preventing from, from him to building instead of thirty-six, a hundred houses? Or is there, uh, shrinking the, the, the care, uh, the, the older, the, the facility and building instead of thirty-six houses, two hundred houses?
Well, you know, you just have a designated amount of lots, and you can only build one house per lot. I think I'm understanding your question, is there anything to keep him from building more houses than the, the numbers that are shown on this plate?
Okay.
And the subdivision of the lots determines how many houses will be built.
Okay.
I, I think what you may be asking, this is his proposed site plan, and if, if he rezoned it to the other classification, he's not going to come back in with the, I mean, he's restricted to this site plan.
And we, we make sure that that happens before he goes to the next level.
Right. Any other questions for Mr. French? I'm trying to start with French.
Well, one thing too, I don't think that, and Mr. Winder might have mentioned it, is he, they are trying to annex it to the city so that it has, uh, city water and sewer facilities, whereas it, you know, it's not, it's in the parish now, so if somebody went out there and developed the one-acre lots, they could have individual, um, wells and septic tanks on that piece of property, as long as they met the requirements for the cross-lake watershed.
All right, thank you, Mr. French. No other questions? All right. Oh, I think we've already had our rebuttal, so, yeah, I'm sorry, does anybody like, anybody who's like, who could do a motion to allow?
Maybe I made a mistake, I, I thought that I was, I made a, I made a mistake, I thought I was giving him time to speak.
Oh.
Yeah, I mean, I just, I'm going to call him back up to ask him a question.
Do you have to suspend your rules or something? Mr. French gave the rebuttal. So move.
All right, uh, Mr. Just to suspend the rules to allow the applicant to speak, Mr. Demarcus, Demarcus, so you may-
You got to vote.
You'll vote?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, is the my vote, we're not already voting?
Suspend the rules.
I didn't, but, Mr., Madam Chair, I, I just, I don't think we needed to suspend the rules, because I'm not asking him to come and speak. I was, I was just asking a question as a commissioner, so I could call him back up during a time of discussion and deliberation here to ask, is that not correct?
You suspended your rules anyway, so it doesn't matter.
All right, so at any rate, um-
So he's, you're, you're up at the pulpit now, I guess, just for the strict purpose of responding to his question, right?
Yes, let, let me put it like this, you heard all the concerns?
Yes, sir.
You got anything to say to address those concerns?
Yes, I have plenty. Someone, someone addressed to me that, uh, question why my, uh, I'm not a resident of Shreveport, and I'm not. I'm a resident of Tennessee. The Contractors Board at Tennessee, I'm licensed in Alabama, resident, all the estates, I'm licensed, residence, commercial, industrial, Alabama, Arkansas, Louisiana, Mississippi, Missouri, Texas, and Tennessee. For, some of the neighbors not aware, maybe not aware, I am listed with the Secretary of State as a legal business in the state of Louisiana. I did pass the Contractors Test in the state of Louisiana. For your information, in just in case you don't know, the state of Louisiana and Tennessee has got what-
has got what you call a reciprocation agreement. A reciprocation agreement means that you can be licensed more than one state, so, and my, I'm not, I'm not a resident of Louisiana, but what I, what the information that the prior neighbor was concerned about why I'm not a resident, why I'm listed, that is my address, because the state of Tennessee, the state of Louisiana require that you have the address for an application. And there's nothing illegal that I've done, is perfectly legal, and I got my license, that I can be, have the address in the state of Louisiana. So we want to refer to that. Now, the other issue is, the, there was someone referred to this project as a low-income project. This is not, will not be a low-income project. This will be a project that would be equal to or better than a Blake. Matter of fact, the Blake is planning on bringing a assisted living to Sweetport. According to my information that I got, I went to the Blake myself personally and talked to the people there, they're planning on bringing a Blake to Tennessee, I mean, to Sweetport, right across the bridge. The next issue is, the lots that we have, we're trying to give everybody an opportunity that's financially able to move on a waterfront development project. And the house is going to run, the square foot of the house is going to, going to be a minimum of fif, that's fifteen hundred heated. You've got a two-car garage, that can be four hundred square foot, so that's twenty-two hundred square foot. So just for, one of the members asked, what would the cost of the house be? So you've got now fifteen hundred, and you've got any two-car garage, nineteen hundred square feet, times a hundred and thirty-five dollars a square foot. That's two-hundred-and-fifty-six thousand dollars that that house would be. Not including the price of the lot, and the price of the lots haven't been, haven't been set yet. But we will do the price of the lots based on the market value of the waterfront development in Sweetport and get a, get our maximum dollar amount for those lots. The next thing, that if someone comes and wants to build a bigger house, ain't no problem, they can big a bit, they can build a bigger house. We just come connect one, two, three lots together, no problem. You got the money, I'll be glad to build it. You can put a fifteen thousand square foot hut in there, that's not a problem. We're just trying to give a senior citizen in the area opportunity to move in there, because senior citizens, most senior citizens, after they get sixty-five, they start downsizing their homes. When they downsize their home, they want something that's, that's in a good area, and, but the waterfront area, you're going to have to pay for, and, and, you know, and the cost of housing has gone tremendously. In San Francisco, a twelve-hundred square foot house costs one-point-two million dollars, three-hundred-and-fifty, three-hundred-and-fifty-three dollars a square foot. In New York City, they're selling a, a, a twelve-hundred square foot house for a million dollars. So, and it's just based on geographical location. One thing we do, we do know in America, God don't make them on land, so we landlocked. And, and the, the deal, what we're going to do with the Lick Shore Drive project, we've signed a petition to allow the city of Sweetport to annex their property, right now it's in accounting. We have no intentions, right now, we can put a lot of small houses on there, and we can, and we wouldn't be violating any rules. We have no intention of putting a lot of houses that's not valued on there. What we're trying to do is increase the, the market value of the area, so therefore, we're going to get up, get up, we're going to get our prior value. And then, the, the houses are going to be good-quality houses, we don't, we don't go into a project. I'm a custom home builder, I, I don't, I'm not a, 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 I will build other houses, but I'm a custom home builder. Those houses are going, if you're going to custom house building, they're going to be bricks with siding, they're going to have the two-car garages attached to them, if you want to, crown mold, crown mold, granite countertops, quartz granite, all that stuff is going to be extra, and you have to pay for it. But this is a real fun development, we're going to get up, and we're going to get our, our project out of there. But this, this, this proposed deal, this is a development that we thought a lot about, and we're trying to do this for, some of you might not be aware of, but the Sweetport area was picked by a national, a, a, national organization to be one of the best retirement areas in the area. So therefore, we're coming here trying to do some, do some, push the retirement community into the area that's waterfront that they'll pay for. And in America, according to AARP, ten thousand people per day is going to turn sixty-five years old. Those people are going to have to have what's good. The gentleman said that there's a question about how many assisted living, the assisted living facilities is big around the country. I live in Memphis right now, and I have an assisted live facility in my backyard, you can Google it. It's called Kirby Pines. The membership fee on Kirby Pines was not mistaken, just a membership fee, not to move in. It's a hundred thousand dollar member fee, membership fee, just to get an application in. So it's right in my backyard, they just took and developed twenty acres in my backyard, and they closed off the street that originally had that. And now, right in the back of my backyard, they got, that's their main driveway getting in there. They just spent fifteen, twenty million dollars up in there. This project here is going to do things that are going to bring jobs in, it's going to enhance the, the city's value.
You answered my question. I think what the question was just about, nobody had a sense of scale or quality or any of those things. And so you answered, I think, that question, at least as relates to scale and quality and size, for me. Madam Chair, that's what, that was the only thing I was trying to get, I think that's what the mystery was to those who were trying to ask questions about. It may not satisfy, I just wanted to know it for myself, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Winter. Um, all right, Board, it is your pleasure. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, is the staff, what's the staff recommendation?
Their PUD.
They recommend approval.
Mr. Jean or Mr. Clark, what's staff recommendation?
They recommend approval.
There's five stipulations that are attached to what you're recommending. You recommend approval with five stipulations?
With five proposed amenities and recommendations.
And those five stipulations include that the property shall be developed in substantial accord with the approved preliminary site plan, that a final site plan should be submitted for review and approval by Executive Director of the MPC prior to the issuance of any permits. If annexed, the final site plan is subject to all regulations with the city Sweetport Engineering Department. If not, the site plan will be subject to the requirements of the Cato Public Works Department, that's the third one. The fourth one, the subject tract of land shall be subdivided in accordance with a finalized site plan into legal lots of record. And then the final stipulation for approval is that all proposed amenities shall be included in the final site plan. This is preliminary that we're voting on today, but there needs to be a final site plan before there can be any substantial development.
That will be approved by the Executive Director.
Got you, all right. So if the staff, if that's the staff recommendation, I'll approve, I'd move to approve with the stipulations.
Second.
All right, motion to approve by Mr. Jackson, second by Mr. Joseph, any discussion? All right, I'll call for the vote. This application is approved. All right, with stipulations. All right. The next case is case number P-719. A zoning request, the applicant is Hutchinson Building and Remodeling.
Hey, excuse me, excuse me one second, we need, we can't have this, uh...
Mr. Wilder, Mr. Wilder. You must leave, sir. We will continue with the hearing.
It's she, the lady, Gayle's going to talk.
I'm sorry, just... Is anyone here for, oh, there you are, all right.
My name's Clint Hutchinson, address 133 Bench Tree Louvre, Louisiana, 71037.
All right, and tell us about your application?
Yes, I'd like to build a two-story building on the bottom, I'd like the office on the first floor and proposing two apartments on the second floor.
All right, so you're requesting a zoning change?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Hutchinson? Sorry, I think we're all worn out.
I can imagine, I am too.
I know, I'm sorry, we're trying to find the staff's recommendations.
Approval, the staff recommends approval of this application as submitted.
Second move. But we're not, we're not, no, we're not doing that, we're just trying to figure out, trying to get our mind around this one, okay.
We got to readjust.
All right. All right, if there's no more questions?
Very good.
All right.
I like that, thank you.
Is there anyone else here to speak in favor of this application? All right, seeing none, is anyone here to speak in opposition to this application? All right, Board, it is your pleasure.
So move.
Second. All right, a motion by Mr. Jackson, second by Mr. Andrews. Any discussion, call for the vote? And the motion is approved, the application is approved. All right, thank you, and then last, on the agenda is the UDC amendments, case number C-1519 and P-619, I believe I would defer to Mr. Clark about the status of these amendments, please.
And Madam Chair, the, the billboard industry is a group of real, real tough standards, and they sit through all of this, but we, we've reviewed the, the charge that you gave us to examine the, the UDC billboard, billboard section of the ordinance and come up with recommendations to address some of the concerns. I think that we have come up with a, with some recommendations to address many of the concerns that were expressed. We have not quite got to the point where we have a, a ordinance, because we are looking at repealing the entire ordinance. We have not gotten to the point where we are at a point to recommend total changes to the ordinance. So we are asking that you, as a board, remove this, this, this request from the agenda until at such time we can bring you amendments that can address all of the concerns of the ordinance.
All right, so you're making progress, but we need a little more time, that was just...
We're making, I think we're making significant progress, we sent out all of the, the, the choices and all of the recommendations that we had to each member that's here from the billboard industry. We got back some comments from them, there was not total consensus. We just have one fine line that we are working with, and that's in the area of measurement and so forth. Once we get past that area, we will have some amendments to present to you so that we can ask you to recommend for adoption.
Okay, so do we need to vote on this, on removing this agenda item?
I wish you would.
All right, it's your, it's your pleasure?
So move.
All right, Mr. Joseph, motion to remove this item from the agenda for now, and Ms. Demart, second. Call for the vote. All right, so we will come back to this, to these revisions at a later date?
It will not be a very long period.
Have had some more time?
We're close.
Okay, great, thank you, staff, for your work on that, I know that's a lot of work, and it's been ongoing for a long time, so.
Can I say one thing before we move off on that one? I know we voted on it, but I just want to go on record about it. I think I've heard the biggest issue was the linear to radial spacing, is that correct?
That's one of the issues.
Okay, that's one of the big ones. And I think if we do change from what we've done in the past from linear to radial, I think we need to have some data from other cities, both our size and larger, to support moving to radial. I get it, all right, and I'm just going to go out on a limb here. If you go down to Yuri and Bert Coons, there's a sign at Quarters, there's another sign across the street at the Minute Loop Place. So you've got a hospital on one side and a gas station on the other. Now, I'm not speaking for the sign industry, I'm not speaking for the public. But do you want four signs on every corner? Or do you want zero signs on each corner? There's a happy medium, because you've got to have business. So, you know, one may tilt, I want four signs on every corner, one may tilt, I don't want any signs. So that's what the linear and radial spacing bothers. If you go from linear and you go down one side of Yuri, you can have a sign over here, the other side you can have a sign, but it's not a thousand feet, so you can have two signs, you can't have four, okay? If you go to radial spacing, you just cut out all but the first sign that got there, okay? So I think that's where the rub is, so we need to, if we go to radial, we need to make sure we've got some data that other cities do it and it's working, or if we stick with linear, you know, that's what we've done in the past. So that's all I'm going to say, but just do some research on it.
And we want to do some of our research, and we've also, you know, been contacted by, by the city across the Red River that's asked to sit down with us and discuss both ordinances and come up with some regional expectations and some regional suggestions on how billboards will be addressed, you know, consensus-wise by both cities.
Right.
And we will do, we continue to do research, and you're absolutely right that those are some of the concerns. If we are able to resolve the radial and linear spacing methods, I think we will be at a point where we will be able to present something to you, and we have to decide whether or not we want to continue the cap replacement or repeal the cap replacement.
Thank you, sir.
All right, so, old business, any committee, well, it's the end of our public hearing. Anyone else?
One, one last thing, we were, not we, but the NLCOG was in the paper recently about some thoroughfare concerns, and then it flopped over to social media that they didn't like what NLCOG has done, I know we have a representative on NLCOG. So I guess my question is, so we don't get kind of blindsided, can we get an update, and I don't care if it's monthly or quarterly or whatever, on, on what's going on? Because I heard that I-69 is not approved, there's no money unless we get a gas tax, we're not going to build any more roads. I wasn't at the meeting, but it sounds like that they're trying to dedicate some money to buy the service road right-ofways, but not the actual right-ofways. So I don't care if that's in an email, or you talk about it at the meeting, but I'd just like to get an update on I-49 intercity, I-69 and 3132, those three. When, after the meetings, after you go to NLCOG.
Just, just real briefly, I-49 is still tracking, nothing's being done by I-49. The, the service road idea is in relationship to I-69. They're doing studies and preparing to acquire right-ofway for that service road down Louisiana One for I-69. And nothing has been said about 3132 in recent times.
But, but 49 intercity right now is, is not even talked about, not even on the radar?
I-49 is still, you know, it's not funded, it's still going through the approval process. And I ask the question on behalf of the board every NLCOG meeting,
Right.
You know, how soon is it that we get out of research, and how soon is it that we get out of review?
And start buying right-ofway?
Yeah, and they're saying that once we get through with these things, then we'll start acquiring right-ofway.
Thank you, appreciate it.
All right, so, would that be old business or new business? Do we have any older new business? Committee chair reports. We do have a meeting Friday.
Real briefly, the master plan subcommittee is Friday from 12 to 1. This is the first meeting of 2019, so in that meeting, they will select a chair and a vice chair for the master plan subcommittee, and we hope that that committee will get involved with real, involved MPC planning issues, and not y'all looking awfully tired, so I'm not gonna go in and further with that. I will be out of the office next week, from March 12 through the 15th, and in my absence, the office will be under better control and better care than the rest while I'm there. Mr. Jean will be there. And I will, I will continue to bring back to the board the thoughts next, if you so declare that it shall be done, to extend the period that we allow property owners to, that property has been downzoned as a result of the UDC, an additional year to be able to come in and bring a file for the returning to their original zoning at no cost.
You want that motion to date?
I would appreciate it, but I think...
Yeah, make that motion.
Sir.
Are we voting on something?
Voting to add it on the agenda. We're voting on something.
We're voting to add it to the agenda for April.
Oh, okay.
Okay, sure.
Sure.
Call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
We're not, this isn't a public hearing part portion, so.
No, we just...
Okay. One deal y'all talked about, the master plan subcommittee, who's on that right now?
It is, it is Mr. Roca. Yeah, I've got it right here, I'm sorry.
Roca, Leah, Andrew, Bessie.
Smith, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, Leah, Windsor, Bessie, and what do you steal?
And from the city council, Levett Fuller and Bradford.
Yeah, it's a bigger committee than just...
Stephen Jackson.
And Flurry, from the parish commission, Stephen Jackson and Louis Johnson.
Yes, so Dale, you're on rules and procedures.
That's right. We don't have that committee, right?
I'm hoping we won't even really need them.
Thank you.
But if you want to discuss, we can help you.
That was an excellent committee you got, ma'am.
I put myself on it just for that reason.
Again.
All right, motion adjourned.
All right.
Second.
All right.
Third. Good job.
Okay.
Here's the...
You go with it.